There you go.
In case those people want to see it, okay.
Buy the book here.
Welcome. It is a little late, twelve fifty-two. It is Monday, November twentieth. This is the work session for the Weaver County Commissioners. I'm Commissioner Gage Far. I'll be conducting with me Commissioner Sharon Bollos. To my right, Commissioner Jim Harvey to our left. We're going to start with action or approval of the minutes. For the work session held last week, November thirteenth.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say hi. Hi, motion carries. Let's go to our next agenda item. Discussion regarding the FEMA ordinance update. Gary Meyer, Sean Wilkinson, Courtland Erickson, Ashley. Go ahead. So Gary.
Okay, Commissioners.
I've seen some communication on this.
You have, and we were given direction by FEMA to revive, well, change our flood ordinance. We'll just leave it at that.
Right.
And so they actually sent us language to essentially remove our existing flood ordinance and put this in place. And with this language, it gave us some options to, in a few cases, how many cases total was there, Ashley?
Maybe a handful.
We'll call it four or five cases to be a little bit more restrictive is maybe the best way of
Higher standard.
Higher standard, higher level of standard is what they labeled it as.
Hmm, okay.
If it boils down to it was a little bit more tougher on the applicant. We'll just leave it as that. We opted to not do that. But but in reading through the language here versus the language we previously had, it's fairly similar. There wasn't a lot of issues as to big changes that they made, and their request was that we have this adopted and in place by the end of this month. And so we're here before you to kind of have our first official reading. Or and rather than take you through this word by word, figured I'd let you ask us questions if you have anything. But literally, it was it was almost very similar to what what it was previously.
Yeah, as we were going through comparing what's in place now and Title twenty-two compared to this, they they're word for word in a lot of instances. This new version has more definitions and includes some additional sections to help clarify some things. And this is a template that's used throughout the state as communities update their floodplain ordinance. So it's something that was worked on by a committee throughout the state. And so they provided this as a template to work through. And so, yeah, with the exception of like that higher standard, which our previous ordinance did not have the higher standard benchmarks in it. It's a very similar ordinance to what's in place now.
Yeah, so you don't anticipate we have to make any major changes then?
No.
That's how I went through that a little bit until I went to sleep.
Yeah. Yeah, there was about forty pages of it. It's it's.
Yeah. And I just
Kind of mind numbing, I'll be honest with you.
Forwarded to both of you guys, so.
Yeah. So would you have any questions?
Questions, Commissioner Bollos. Commissioner Harvey. No, no major changes. I mean, they're going to do what they're going to do.
Yeah.
All right, it the only thing I get concerned about is if they came out and said, okay, we made some drastic changes and included a lot in their maps, and it doesn't correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't appear they've done that. So that would be my main concern.
No, there were some small minor changes in the maps, but but in regards to the ordinance, it was pretty
Yeah.
Pretty close to what we had.
That's how I saw.
So.
Okay, so what do you need from us?
Your blessing, acceptance and signature.
This has to go before the
This, yeah, this is an ordinance change.
Yeah.
And normally the requirement is for two readings unless there's an exception to that, like if it goes through a planning commission or something. But one of the we're looking at November thirtieth deadline, and apparently this did not get on your agenda for tomorrow. So the November twenty-eighth meeting, which is an evening meeting.
Well, I think we have two meetings out there, do we not?
No, that's on the fifth.
Oh, that's on the fifth.
The long twenty-eighth morning meeting is CRA for its management.
I got it. Okay, thank you for that.
Put it on the agenda for the twenty-eighth, we do get it passed that way. One of the options for a enactment of the first reading only is if you find that immediate enactments in the best interest of the county and the county's residents. So if you find that in this situation, the November thirtieth deadline does make it in the best interest of the county and the residents. So I'm back to the first reading, you just say that.
Okay. Yeah, which makes sense to us.
That's what I would say.
Because in talking with FEMA, I actually called called them last week in an effort to see if there's any sort of extension or anything that we could do on this, just to give us a little bit more time, not realizing it didn't occur to me all the complexities of the upcoming commission meetings with budgets and and holidays and how it kind of caught me off guard a little bit. So I asked them for an extension. They said absolutely not. They said the federal government is not willing to grant any extensions on this whatsoever. And if the November thirtieth deadline is not met, they begin the lengthy process of unenrolling the community, the county residents from the ability to purchase flood insurance.
Yeah, which we can't have.
So.
The only thing I'd suggest is on the record, say the reason why you are on the second reading.
Yeah.
Because I really, I don't see how anyone here would ever challenge you, because it's your opinion that what's in the best interest.
Okay, so we're covered under that. We feel it's in our the best interest of the public. Which obviously is in the best interest because we need people to be able to get flood insurance.
That's right.
And that's the only day we can fit it in, you know.
Yep.
It is what it is. Commissioner Harvey. Unless you have some bright ideas.
No.
Commissioner Bollos, you okay with that? Okay, okay. All right, so we'll make sure today that it gets on next Tuesday's commission meeting. And then, Brad, when we get to this, let's make sure that you explain kind of what the galleries of us waving that second.
And this will be at the five thirty, is it five thirty or five?
Five thirty.
Five thirty commission meeting, that's six, that's when we are budgeting.
Yeah.
Is this something you'd consider putting on the consent agenda?
No, because the action has to be taken.
It has to be. Oh, you're right.
I don't think we can.
That's right. That's correct.
Willing to actually state the reason. It won't make it very, very short.
Okay, yeah, we were trying to stay out of the way of budget hearings as much as possible, hence the request to just do it as a consent. So we can do that at five thirty. I don't anticipate a lot of people will be there to discuss this.
No, right, no.
No, it's just thinking. Not a super exciting topic, but it is, so. Hey, you got it. Okay, let's get it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thanks.
Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Gentlewoman. All right, wow, we're back on schedule. Look at that. Unless you had something else.
Nope.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, you guys.
Appreciate it.
Very good luck.
Thank you.
Appreciate.
Oh, boy.
That's a right around the bar.
It's gonna be better. It's gonna be brighter. Thanks, you guys.
Did you did you go to my car?
Thanks. Okay, well, you got something to eat. Okay, then we'll move on.
You're the best.
Since we're back on schedule.
I know, look at us.
Yeah, we're done flying.
Are we?
Mm-hmm.
For that promise?
Uh-huh. Well, no, because, you know, Commissioner Harvey, all of a sudden, he can get the floor and then he's kind of like that Leland Pollock, he never gives a back up, you know.
I told Leland, I so I went down in a Subaru, I says, Lee, I says, you know, Leland, I'm driving a Subaru, and he says, you're kidding me. And I says, yeah. I says, you know how people name their cars? I says, yeah, I says, I named mine Little Leland Pollock. I gotta take a picture, me and Little Leland Pollock. Oh, you missed that deal. You weren't there when they were talking about public lands and that guy.
All right, we're back online. We're here to discuss the CJC contractor contract. Scott Mendoza, Sean Wilkinson, Bill Ross, Rod Leighton, and Scott Parker with us. And of course, Courtland Erickson.
Scott forwarded the invitation to me and asked me to come in.
Okay. All right, Scott, go ahead.
Are you ready? Okay.
We're ready.
Thank you, Commissioners. What we want to do today is, one, provide you an update on where we're at in CJC building project process. We wanted to present the budget to you. And we wanted to obviously coordinate with you before taking the next step of any time. I have a package there for you. The top sheet there is obviously the concept. The second sheet is the site plan. The third sheet is just just in case you were interested in seeing the breakdown, the points that were associated with the committee giving the award to Wadman Corporation.
Oh.
In the almost, the second column from the very far right is the column that has the contractor proposed fee. So just in case you're interested to see where we came in the the range.
Where you're looking?
The column all the way to the right, comeback one.
Okay.
It says D there in blue.
Got it. Okay.
Wadman Corporation is in that dark green color.
Yep.
And you can see the range of bids or estimates that we got there, just in case you were interested.
Wow.
And then on the fourth page is the budget, but we will get there in just a minute. As far as an update, we want to let you know, remind you that obviously we have a design that is one hundred percent complete. Great news, the subdivision, the dedication plat for the one lot subdivision process that is approved, it's actually recorded. We recorded it last week. The site plan that's on that page two or the second page of your package, that is completely approved. So the project is entitled, it is entitled.
So it's ready to dig.
It's ready to go.
Okay.
Well, except for building permit, but that's the next step.
Okay.
So we're we're gonna
It's in Ogden City.
Yes. Yeah, and that's something that we do want to talk to you about.
Okay.
So don't don't let us forget. The RFP process is complete. The award is to Wadman Corporation. We do have a draft contract in our possession, ready for all of us to review. And great news as of today, Rod has, and he can provide more information on this, but he has assigned school district lead.
Oh, good.
You know what, I think what I'll do is just turn this all over to you now, but Commissioners, if I can take your attention to leading to that fourth page, it's CJC building budget. I think there was a cost that you were that we had all kind of moved forward with, which I think was about seven million dollars.
Right.
And you can see all the costs that we anticipate being a part of this project and where we're ending up. That bottom figure right there.
Okay.
I think what's part of the, you know, what we wanted to talk to you all about is additional, well, this existing budget, how much we appear to be over, where all this stands, additional funding sources, things like that. One thing, again, I want to, I do want to touch bases if you're on the building permit process, because there is a cost savings. I also want to mention the very bottom, well, you can see the Ogden City fees. If you look at I don't know about the lower third of that list, you're going to see Ogden City swift permit, Ogden City right away permit.
Yeah.
Ogden City building permit, state fee, just a few hundred dollars, Ogden City planning review fee and Central Weaver sewer impact fee.
I noticed that's, well, that's big.
Yeah. So we called, went through the square feet, the use, the type of use that it is, and that's the figure that we were given. They went a little heavy on the use in terms of sewer usage just to make sure that we were accounting for a number that that we were not going to have to increase. So they when we were talking about use, we were talking about exam rooms, conference or training room, offices, kind of business offices, they just said, okay, let's let's just assume this is all exam room. Because that's kind of the heaviest use in terms of, I guess, sewer.
Yeah.
And so that's the figure that they gave us was a fifty-eight, six fifty. So I would expect that to come down just a little bit, but we don't know exactly how much. So we want to make sure that you're aware of all of those fees. The fact that we could have some conversations that you would agree to, or if you're interested in doing that with Ogden City. We have an MOU that's in place. We don't feel that the MOU applies in this case because the MOU didn't anticipate a situation where the county would be building on property that the county didn't technically own. We could amend the lease. The commission could have voted Ogden City and asked the city more of a generous interpretation of the MOU that would allow the county to do its own review, own inspections. And there would be significant cost savings there and permit fee. So there's some
Forty-four thousand dollars in Ogden City. Now, I guess Scott, the question to you would be if we do that work, sorry, Scott, what?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If the county does that work, does the building inspection division have to bill them the same amount that we would typically bill for similar projects?
Yeah, because it's municipal services fund versus a general fund, so we would need to compensate them at least for the direct costs that they incurred. So we wouldn't have to build in a profit margin, but if Stan has to spend five thousand dollars worth of effort on it, then we would need to reimburse him five thousand dollars.
And Sean knows. That was a good question. Commissioners, if you have questions about the budget, you can try to answer those, but
Could I bring up one thing about the budget?
Yes.
So are you are you going to talk about contingency?
Well, I was going to get there. I mean, this this is the cost as we see it now with no contingency.
Right.
So.
So did you need an answer on as far as negotiating with Ogden City or Central Weaver?
Well, yeah, that's part of the conversation today. I mean, it's it's something that you could consider doing. On the MOU, to save about that forty-four thousand dollars, we have some options. We could amend that MOU to make it clearly applied. That way the county could do its it's the work, the review work and the inspections and all that. Another option would be to just go to the city and see if if they interpret that MOU in any other way that under the the current MOU, they feel that it does apply. If that's the case, then we can move forward. But this is this decision would need to be made, who's going to do that? That building permit review work.
Okay.
And then the sewer district, I'm not sure if there is a conversation to be had there, if there is.
Yeah, there's a conversation.
Okay.
Sure. I mean, I, to me, that's we want to be fair, but again, every you know, I shouldn't say every city, but majority of the cities have a representative on that board. They've all, these cities have contributed to through ARPA funding. So to me, it's kind of a, you know, no brainer. We need to help, you know, you help once, let's help again. And Central Weaver is not in a situation where they need the money actually right now. So I'm happy to help with that conversation.
Okay. Great. So I think where we want to end up is obviously having a conversation about where we're at in terms of funding, where we think we can get to with additional funding sources. And that includes a conversation with the sewer district. And then ultimately, Commissioners, if you'll give us a thumbs up and give us direction to proceed, okay, we can review the contract with Wadman and continue.
So where where we where are we on funding then, based upon these different factors?
So we've got four million dollars from County ARPA, one point three million, almost one point four million from the cities. That assumes Ogden's going to sign and pay us. I just plugged in a million for the sale of the building because it's just kind of a placeholder.
Yeah.
Two hundred and fifty thousand state appropriation, three hundred thousand donation from LDS Church, and then we have miscellaneous donations of sixty-three thousand, which brings our total funding source to one million, or excuse me, seven million dollars even. So with the costs here, seven point one million, so we're we're under by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The one thing that Scott brought up to me is this includes no money for contingency, and normally we have a five to ten percent, maybe seven to eight percent contingency. So I just threw in a ten percent contingency on the construction dollars on the Wadman design, don't have the six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for a contingency. That puts us to seven point eight million, so we're basically short eight hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars on this project. Now, that that does have some estimates, so if if we can get one point two or one point three for the sale of the building, well, then that helps, there's three hundred thousand dollars of that. Or if we can get a few more donations, or if the state's willing to kick in more than seven or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we have options, but right now we don't have that in concrete, so that's why I'm saying we're short
Yeah.
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
I don't disagree.
A couple of things on that I mentioned. So the two hundred and fifty thousand on the first state appropriation, that's for this fiscal year. So that's, we got that. Maybe Tracy brought this up with you, Commissioner, but I know that I know that that money's probably not going to get used by all the other CJC's, so it has to be spent by June thirtieth. And so she
This year's appropriation.
Yes, this year's appropriation.
Okay.
And she's already starting to get calls from some of the directors going, man, we're not going to be able to spend this out by then. So I I'm pretty confident that's going to go up some. I don't know if we're talking fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, but they're going to be trying to get rid of some of that money. And the ones, the three centers that are building right now are saying, well, we want it. So I I think that's going to go up. Yeah, we also have next year, so that same, that appropriation this year was a million, next year it's two, two million dollars at one time for that fiscal year. We will also get another hunk of that. But I can't sit here and say, okay, Tracy's going to give me another two hundred and fifty thousand next year, but the money is there and it's twice as much as this year, and we didn't use all of it. And so I'm pretty confident we will be able to maybe pull in another two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand on that next fiscal year, which would be twenty twenty-four. That makes sense?
Uh-huh, yep.
And so we have that.
I think you're spot on.
And I, again, I'm, I talked to her multiple times a month, and I'm always like, Tracy, I want more, I want more and more, you know, so we have a very good relationship, and she loves the Weaver County, mainly because of you guys. Weaver County has been one of the big contributors to the CJC where other counties have not. And so I don't understand that completely, but there's counties that don't put a cent into the CJC. And and we do, and so the state, at least Tracy's side of it, they they love Weaver County, they love the support you guys give, and so that's going to come into play when this money starts to come out. And she hasn't forgot that, so. The the other thing, we do have a couple of donors that we're working with. I'm hesitant to even talk about who they are right now. I'd prefer not to. Just because one of them is looking pretty promising, I think. I think we can do something there. And so I just, that's in the works. We haven't give up, given up on getting additional funding here. We're still working on it. But I've been turned down a couple of times with some of those, but this, the one I spoke with on Friday, I met with them, it I felt pretty confident that they were very interested in helping us, but and it could be substantial, but I can't say for sure, but
When will you know on that?
Probably two weeks.
Okay.
I would give it that. We're getting the information out to them as quickly as possible, and then it's, you know, Reed's helping me with that. Reed, it's always a good to have Reed Richards in the room with you. That's always a good person to take with you. So he's been, he's been helping me with that. So we we are, we do have a few other things coming in. Will we get to the eight hundred thousand? I I think it's possible. And I think we can come up with the eight if we have a little bit more time, but we'd really like to obviously get going and getting this built. So.
Okay, so worst case scenario, at least on paper right now, because things change, is that eight hundred thousand, if putting in a ten percent contingency. My understanding you're
Yeah, so what I would be asking from you guys is, are you okay with me essentially using the capital projects? I would I would recommend pulling it from the Capital Projects Fund if we needed it. So I would basically just designate eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand of Capital Projects Fund. We've got enough in there that we'll just set aside, segregate it off, and then if we don't need it, we'll just release, you know, the hold on it, and it'll still be in Capital Projects. Otherwise, it's at least there, so we're not halfway through a building and have to stop.
Yeah. So I'm okay.
I'm okay with that.
Harv?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
So I would just say. Getting down to the contractor portion. I want to make sure that, do everything possible not to have to use that other eight hundred thousand, so if it comes to change orders. Um, I mean, I know how contractors work and Wadman's pretty good, but I'd be very careful on approving any change orders. Unless look, looking like we can offset that. In the original amount. In fact, I think it wouldn't hurt to put that in there, that no change order will be approved on an increase unless there's an offsetting decrease. And let, let Wadman know that. Cause you know, that's, you know, he didn't go in substantially low, I mean. But he's blowing up that.
Second lowest I believe, there is, there is one thing that's come up, it has to do with soils on the property.
Yeah.
Um. That, that is what is uncertain, that we just don't, there's just no way for us to know what amount of work's gonna go along with soils. I got with the civil engineers and the, the cost or the price that Wadman put towards. Dealing with whatever they encounter. Um, seems to be pretty reasonable, so what? What we have in the geotechnical report is a possibility of having to remove anywhere from two to eight feet of undocumented fill. Of course, if that is in a location where you need to bring it back up to grade. Um, it's all gonna be structural fill and it's gonna be kind of costly, so. We don't know what will have to be excavated and hauled away and then imported and compacted until we kind of get into it. But what we did find out, I visited with our engineers. What they helped me understand was that Wadman and their price, what they've done is not done two feet. Well, what we did is take one point nine acres, which is the entire site.
Right.
We kind of looked at it and estimated, well, development is going to occur, not on everything, but let's say an acre and a half. And what we. Determined is that Wadman basically said if we took, if we had to take acre and a half and take it down three feet. And bring it all back up to grade. There's a cost, so we think that Wadman has been pretty reasonable with what they anticipate. The work will have to be with soils, but again, we're not certain until we get into it. So if we see a change order has to do with soils. I wouldn't be surprised, but again, I think Wadman's had a really good job of estimating a reasonable cost for soils.
Good. Is there any water in that hill?
Rod, you were there?
Nope, we didn't find any water, they just, they just are not sure. It, wha- what's under there, if, if the city or, I mean, that's been owned by five different people, like fed from federal government to the state. It's never been privately owned, but there has been some dumping there, and so some feel like, once we start to dig, we might find where somebody's dumped. But we did not find that when we dug the trench all the way across the property with the so- soil guys, the geotech guys. It was right down to the Lake Bonneville stuff. I mean, we can see sand, we can see seashells, we can see everything along there. But over that hill, you can see where they dumped. But that's parking lot, and so I, plus those trees were there, you had those trees that were there for. And then it was a hundred years old, those trees, and so if they. Dumped, they had to have done it before those trees were planted in there, so. Uh, they felt very good about the soil, but again, you just don't know until we dig it and find a. Nineteen thirty-five Chevy down there or something, I don't know what we can find. But it was very, it was very promising with those guys, the geotech guys said, yeah, I think you're, this is a great place to build, and I think you'll be just fine, but. Who knows?
Okay.
So.
So I'm assuming we have it in the contracts and say have that. As a specific. Potential upgrade, that if they don't, let's say they only end up taking a foot, that we get a credit back for that additional amount.
We would expect a change order in the positive, yes.
Yeah, so.
Uh, I think it's, it's in their cost proposal. Um, it does say. Very, very bottom line, uh, Geotech says to remove two to eight on undocumented fill. This is very vague, which, that's why, exactly why we wanted to mention it.
Right.
We have included nine thousand, nine thousand cubic yards of import in our bid.
Okay.
So yes, there could be a deductive change order if they found less.
Yep. All right, makes sense. Good.
We, we also found one little error, I think. There's, I think there was two different places where it was billed the same thing, and it's, it's forty thousand dollars, but. I think their bid is forty thousand by, so it, it's work that we're doing ourselves and that, and it got put on.
Have we let them know about that or?
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's going through all the numbers and trying to figure out i- if that's what happened, but I'm pretty confident it is. And it was a little confusing on how that happened, and so we might reduce that.
Every forty thousand.
Oh yeah, we'll take it, we'll take it.
Commissioners, another thing you might want to consider, and Scott, I don't know if you mentioned this before I came in, but. Uh, impact fees with the sewer agency, do we know how much those were?
Uh, yes, so we were talking about that just a little bit, uh, fifty.
Governmental entities are allowed to waive impact fees in certain circumstances. And so we might want to consider requesting a formal waiver of the impact fees as a donation and show the benefit of the community that is.
Yeah, I agree. So. I'll, I actually have a sewer meeting tonight. I'll bring that up. We need to get that on the agenda for next month.
Yeah.
I'll see if we can't get that on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Yeah.
That's great. Uh, conversation with Ogden City. What would you? Which out of this group? Is most appropriate to begin conversation with the city on the MOU? If you want to go that direction.
I'd say Sean and you. Yeah.
We can start.
Yeah. So you, yeah, we probably need to have that discussion sooner than later.
Yeah.
If we're gonna. Get going, right? Okay, what else?
If you're comfortable with the conversation we've had today, then it can be fairly good to try to continue reviewing the contract. With Chris in Portland. The draft contract between the county and Wadman, we'll continue to do that and have that go back and forth and start trying to. Arrive at something that's more final for you to consider. If you're comfortable with that, we'll, we'll do that.
Great.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Good. Looks like you gotta go green light.
Great, thank you.
So, so on that approval, Scott, we talked about that approval or that congratulation letter. Whatever that we call that thing that goes to Wadman.
Oh, yes, we, we didn't even want to take even a half step, which is just the award leg.
Award letter, oh, okay.
So it sounds to me like you're fine with sending the award letter to Wadman.
If we're, if we've been given directions to continue, because they're, they're willing to start ordering a few things if they, they got that award letter. And so, I mean. I think it's gonna go forward, so you're okay with that.
Yeah, yeah. So gotta start the process somewhere.
Yeah, we communicate something in the award letter about how we are, we really don't want to see change orders.
Uh, certainly.
Then they, I mean, when they do the contract, they're accepting knowing that, and we can put provisions in the contract. But at least just highlight that.
That's the right, that's proper. I, I think that's been the word, not just say, hey, listen, if there's some. If there's some changeovers and we'd like to. Figure out how to reduce those on.
I think we can also acknowledge and want to see what language to use, but I think one of the reasons they won is because. They made contributions, they, you know.
They did, they reduced their fee, so they're not making any money on this. They're just doing it essentially, it looks like for cost, or close to, I mean. Yeah, they waived their construction management fee.
Did they?
Yeah.
Then maybe we shouldn't roll that in.
Or just stay.
Here's their schedule of values, if you care to take a peek at them.
So here, here was actually below. And. And their cost. So where, where did care fall down in your opinion, I?
Uh, presentation for sure, some of this middle.
Okay.
They were, they were the last, so they were talking six months. Longer to come, to complete the project.
Here?
Here.
Okay.
Yeah, and that would end up being more, lots more money in here, here and there, so it offset, they were too far different. And, uh.
There's your caution. Okay, well, looks like you got a deal, Rod.
And this is the, so. Scott, who was this, one of you guys want this? This is the, um. He's signed by.
So we need to get.
To go to you guys next Tuesday.
So now we'll split it on the.
So we'll need to put that on the agenda.
Yeah.
That's great, they didn't have anything.
No, they didn't change anything. That was cool, right?
Yeah.
And Chris, do we know where we, they are on the sale of the building? Are we still holding off?
Last time February, when we met with Sue Wilkerson, they wanted to wait until about nine months before construction completion. In order to list the building for sale.
Okay.
And why don't we just maybe provide an update to Sue and say, this is where we're at? Whether you want to still wait till nine months, or do you want to revise that?
Yeah, I don't know why they're waiting, I.
When we had that meeting, the market was substantially different than it is today. I would say, I don't think you wait nine months, I think maybe right after the first of the year. What, so what's your anticipated? Construction time?
Well, they said they'd be done by July thirty-first, but now we're gonna be a little bit later, so I'm saying Au- August thirty-first, we'll be done. We could be done, that's what Wadman's saying.
Yeah, they were looking at an eight to nine month timeline, but that.
Yeah, so we're, we're probably eight or nine months out after.
We're talking about in the advertisements and saying that. Uh, it would be a purchase that we would lease back rent, but the rent would be a donation. Uh, in the name of the CJC, just so there wouldn't be an interruption of services, and so as long as the people who are looking at it are aware of that.
Sure. I, yeah, if they're talking August, it's not too early right now to get it on the market.
Yeah, and if, and if they do get it on the market now, we probably ought to ramp up and get the agreement with the Friends Board. Done, and as part of that agreement, that wouldn't be accepted, some, this is risk here. Is that it would be the amount that the building sells to, for the, the donation, so if, if it goes for one point three million, it'd be a one point three million dollar contribution. That goes for lower, that's the risk.
Well, I would, yeah, I think what you need to put on there is net seller proceeds.
Right.
Would be the language. You'd want to use. Not necessarily sales price, but net seller's proceeds.
What does that mean exactly?
I mean, what, that means if Harvey was selling a piece of property, he could sell a piece of property for, easily for him to be like three million dollars. But he might have, you know, some fees to pay in there and title insurance, and he may come out with two point eight.
Closing costs and realtors' commissions and other things.
All the costs.
One thing that the Friends Board did bring up, which we would have to discuss as part of their donation, they wanted to be able to recoup the amount of. Money that they fronted so far for architect fees. I, my personal opinion, there's other funding sources that they have access to, but I, it's like how far do we want to push it, I don't know.
We, we already have to come up with all the money from the sale of their proceeds upfront, so that's also, you, you commissioners have already approved to take that out of capital projects and then get reimbursed once. Sales, so.
We're already looking for.
Yeah, we're already putting in, we're extra, and we're taking the risk that if it only sells for eight hundred thousand, we're taking the risk there too.
Yeah, that's, I'm very much aware of that.
Jump again.
No, no, I just. So you could just get us, give them to give us that hundred and sixty as a donation, that's what they do, they raise money for the. If they can do that, it'd be great.
I think we can, they are very, they can be very reasonable. I think if we just sit down and explain the situation.
Yeah, yeah. All right, work your magic, Chris. Okay, what else?
Have we had any movement on the agreement with Ogden City, the funding agreement?
And Morgan. Morgan wants one little clarification, they want a clarification, uh, language in their agreement that says if. A certain amount of time passes and money isn't spent, they'll have enough time to be able to spend that. That's why we have the six months in. And I'll talk with Garrett about that. That was the only hangup that they had. We got, uh, Rob was able to give a plain city.
Four times.
Um, the Ogden City one, it really is just removing one particular provision regarding Davis Bacon, which we are confident in our legal interpretation. That Davis Bacon does not apply, and so, um, we're gonna use their. Subversive improvement agreement, so it'll be separate from all the others, but it will, it will happen. And that one is gonna be a reimbursement basis, and I don't know if they're last in or what their terms are, but I'll find out whether we can access their money.
Okay.
I just was getting a little nervous, I wanted to make sure we were getting something locked in before they changed me, or if we have to start over.
You won't have to start over on that, I am. So it's just that, um, Davis Bacon. Which I told you all about Dougie Pork, right?
Uh huh.
Yeah, I told Quinny, researched Dougie Pork, and he spent about an hour looking at. Uh, Dougie Pork, and he just came up with pictures of ham on the internet. It was a joke, we were referring to Davis Bacon.
We like that. All right, is that it, Scott?
Thank you.
Forget, Scott, Scott.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Scott, thanks for all your work, you've done a lot of work on this.
Yeah, I sent something to the church the other day, uh, update, you know, to get this money moving a little faster, and I sent them the PowerPoint.
Yeah.
They said, can we see the PowerPoint again? And I said, yeah, let me send that to you, and I looked at it, May of twenty twenty. I said, whoa, wait a minute, I, I watched you guys, that's three, three and a half years ago.
May of twenty twenty?
May of twenty twenty is when I first saw the PowerPoint, and I'm like, okay, I, I was thinking it was eighteen months or something.
It's been a while.
They slow, they're very slow. But I had a real, very positive conversation with them, and so.
So they're still okay?
They're still okay, yeah, they, they're kind of locked in a little bit because of, they did that for Utah County.
Yeah.
So they're gonna have to say, well, we love Utah County, we hate Utah County. I don't think we're gonna get the presiding bishop to say that. Maybe that's true.
Maybe, who knows? All right, thanks. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, we have on there, Stephanie.
I'm just hanging out, listening.
Hi, Steph, you made it back.
Yeah, I'm up in Idaho.
You're in Idaho.
Yeah.
If you look at it that way.
Yeah, exactly.
Hey, that new Saint George Airport's pretty snazzy.
Not bad, is it?
Yeah, I was really, really impressed. It's very nice. We, we could use something like that in, in Ogden.
Yeah, I think we could. Yeah. You heard that they, uh. It was like you wasn't very kind to your mayor.
I listened to the deal.
Oh, you did? Stephanie.
Yeah. Chris Crockett, did you get a chance to listen to that?
I started, but I did not get all the way through it.
Yeah.
We're pretty critical, huh?
Yeah, particularly of their, uh, attorney.
I'll have to go back.
Yeah. It'll be interesting to see what happens with that.
It will, yeah. Well, I know Stevenson's floating the idea of a regional. Airport authority, which is originally came from Commissioner Harvey. So. We might have a chance at that.
Uh, yes, Stevenson weighed in on that during that hearing, um, he was very, very diplomatic, but, um. Definitely concerned, so.
Well, that's, we're, we're talking about Bob Stevenson.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you'd come about Jerry. Oh, wow, yeah. I, I, I talked to, I talked to Bob just really briefly about it, uh, after one of our meetings, when I was at UAC. So, yeah, no, they'd be very much in favor of that.
Was Jerry in favor of that, or what? I didn't hear Jerry's comment.
Uh, Jerry's at the very, very end of it. He, he basically said, this is a, this is a local issue, but. Um, this needs to be cleared up and, and, and we need to keep hearing about the progress it's making. Um, some of the legislators were in favor of, of doing something about it if it can't get resolved on the local level.
Yeah.
Jerry Stevenson talked about dog bites. Are you ready for your next word question to come in?
We are.
Okay.
Talked about what?
Just because some dogs are biting somewhere.
Oh.
You don't let us eat all dogs, but in the whole.
Hi, how you doing? Hi there. How are you doing? Nice to see you again. Wow, wonderful. How many years now, Lynn? We're going back.
Oh, my gosh.
Were you bringing anybody with you, Lynn, or?
I didn't, my board chair was gonna try to make it, he had a court.
Okay, well. Please feel free to join.
I'm Christopher Crockett.
I'm Lynn Goodwin.
Very nice to meet you.
It's nice to meet you.
She's with the tree house.
Yes.
My children love.
Thank you.
Everybody loves that.
Well, that's nice. Thank you. That's nice. Thank you. And I'm just here to thank you.
We're waiting for Commissioner Bolson. We'll get started if that's okay.
Yeah, sure.
Do you like something to drink or?
For a minute. Yeah, thank you.
Steph, you're gonna be back tomorrow? Or are you gone all week? I forgot what you told me.
Um, I'm I'm working remotely all week, so. We'll drive back down on Wednesday, but I'll be in all week next week, so.
That's right. You're having Thanksgiving at your place, right?
Yeah, on Thursday. Yep.
Good for you.
I got about twenty people coming too. All my family. Uh, twenty, about twenty. Yeah, I couldn't make forty work, but got the whole family coming.
Good for you. Are you still serving liver and onions?
No, but my mom would have done something like that. I'm I'm doing turkey and ham.
That's probably a little more traditional.
Yeah, if I wanted to go southern, if I wanted to go southern, we'd do fried turkey. That's some of the best stuff ever. I'll I will do a fried turkey for y'all sometime. And just bring it in, cuz.
That'd be good. I'd like.
That's some good stuff. Bring in some collards for, uh, uh, Jim.
Atta girl.
Well, I think we'll go ahead and get started. Should be, we don't have a lot of people online, so we're gonna start our one thirty. Discussion regarding the treehouse, children's treehouse museum presentation. We have with us, uh, Lynn Goodwin. Looks like Kenya and Doug didn't make it. So Lynn, appreciate you taking the time to be with us. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you for having me, um, giving me a few minutes to tell you how much we appreciate what you do for us and, uh. We're lucky that we're located in Weaver County and have been for all these years and. Uh, we just wanted to give you a quick update. I realized looking at my, um, calendar and everything that I have not. I've been really remiss. I have not come to thank you in person, uh, for a long time.
Well, we had a little thing called COVID that probably kept.
It did. It changed everything.
Appreciate you taking the time now.
Well, we we wanted, and I'm especially excited about some of the projects that Ramp helped us with recently and. The changes they made, you know, Ramp is such a blessing to everybody. Uh, in this, uh, county and community, and it's just a good time to say thank you, I think. So. We wanted to thank you for helping Weaver County get ready for kindergarten. We had such a great time this year. We gave these. Thanks to your help, uh, to all the Title One schools, to all the kindergarten children in Ogden District and all the Title One. Uh, kindergarten children in Weaver County, so that and Weaver District. So the whole idea was Weaver County is ready for kindergarten. And then we had a big party. On August fifth, which also was a Ramp free day. So we had, um, more than two thousand children of marriage show up. Uh, excited about going back to school, no matter what age the children were. And we had a local partner, a company called Reader Link. Which is based out at the VDO and they donated, uh, brand new children's books. So we, and a variety of ages. So we gave out books for toddlers and babies, all the way up to high school kids who got series of books. And it was just a great day. And, uh, a great effort. And a lot of kindergarten teachers express their appreciation for having. Materials that help parents know how to help their child get ready for school. Because in the back of this, there are all kinds of games you can cut out and play and. We got pictures sent to us of families who were playing the games together and doing the activities to get ready for school. And they get. Not only the book, but they get a paperback in here too, and a little permit. So you all have helped make that possible and. You know, I brought extra copies if you want them, but I know we don't want to burden you with too much material. But I wanted to say thank you for that, cuz I thought that was a really great effort this year. And the other thing that you all helped us do this summer. We do a program for kids who are older, uh, from eleven to fourteen, and we call it the Summer of Learning. And the idea is we bring in all these. Artists and authors and writers and, um, performers from all over the country, thanks to Ramp Grants. And they come and spend a week at Treehouse and they work with these kids, uh, in workshops. And one of them. That we were able to do this year was to bring in a writer named Kira Graff, who's a young adult writer. Um, he writes mostly for teenage years, but he just is, has been picked up by, uh, the James Patterson Group. And he wrote, uh, co-offered with Jim Patterson, a new book called Minerva Keen's Detective Club. That a lot of the kids have been reading. And he came from Chicago, did a workshop for kids on how to be a writer. And from, uh, idea to publication in one week. And this is the publication. So the kids actually wrote the stories. And they're just really fun. And, um, they, a lot of the kids were not sure if they wanted to be writers. But one of them said to me afterward, I know what my path is.
That's what they decided, huh?
I'm at that age where I cry about everything. Sorry.
Got the Ramp logo on there?
I do, yeah. So and that, that was locally printed by our friends over at, um, Stone Mountain. And, uh, the kids. Had a great time writing their stories and putting their bios together and they're really funny, so.
That's great. What a good experience for this.
Thank you for providing such an incredible service and experience for the. I can't tell you how many, even within my family, you just, they love going in there.
That's so good.
It's frequent.
Yeah.
My young kids have a, get a membership from me every year.
It's a great spot.
One of my favorite comments this summer was from a family that was from out of state and they happened to come to Treehouse on a Ramp day. And we were letting, you know, we we get typically about twelve hundreds or fifteen hundred in June and July and then August. Because it's the kindergarten thing is a little bit bigger. But they they said, yes, it's free admission, you know, and we explained that it was Ramp sponsored day. And they said, wow, tell us more. So I was telling them what the Ramp program does and how valuable it is for our community. And they said. How do we get this in our community? And I said, well, you can contact, I'm sure our county, they'd be happy to tell you how to do it. But it takes a whole lot of people to get it passed and repassed and, uh, make it work. But they were totally impressed. And we hear that often at the museums, so.
It's so nice that the word's out there and people know that.
Yeah, it's great. And I'm here just to pledge our support. We'll help you get it passed again. Uh, we think it's just been transformative. Not only for Treehouse, but for so many organizations, so. Thank you. And I stuck in just cuz I can't resist pictures. Just thanks for, you know, putting smiles on so many kids. Um, those are some of our favorite pictures, but, uh, you know, I have thousands. We're close to this year. And next year, in twenty twenty four, we'll be, um, celebrating our eighth official birthday. And how is that possible? When we opened in ninety two, it's cuz we opened on February twenty ninth. So we only get a real birthday every four years, so we're only eight. But we're celebrating closing in on four million visitors in that time who come through the doors and. Uh, just, you know, every year we serve about a hundred and thirty thousand children, parents, including fourteen thousand schoolchildren and their teachers. And coming to us on, uh, to our field trips. So we're a busy place and, you know, we're. We're really proud to be in Weaver County and we hope that you're proud that Treehouse is here too.
Absolutely.
We love it. We're happy you're here too.
Yeah, it's been crazy ride for all these years.
How long have you been there since the start?
I am the founding director, so.
Oh, yeah. Okay. That doesn't happen that often.
No, ten years in the mall and then four years in purgatory. When we moved to the old standard examiner building. And, uh, and seventeen years in our new.
Every Wednesday. We love.
People said we wouldn't make it, but we did. Profit is is challenging, but but thank you. And if you're interested in any of these materials, I can leave some with Shelley or, um.
Bigger books, the kindergarten one, I would be interested.
Do you want the whole package, Jim? Yeah, comes with a little backpack, so.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
You bet.
We might check with one of the girls. They might wanna take one of those or.
I will.
Have it here for, you know, people look at when they come in.
We're, we're really proud of this publication.
This is really, did all the offers get a copy?
They did. They got two copies to give to parents or grandparents.
Well, that's an amazing experience for those kids.
Yeah, and the best part is those twelve to eleven to fourteen year olds said, can we sign up for next year?
Really?
So, yeah.
Well, Lynn, thank you very much for taking time out of your day. We very much appreciate what you've done and that, you know, it is, that's a county jewel over there. And, uh, for actually, I think Northern Utah, you have to have people come from other counties.
We do, and from out of state. We have members as far away as Idaho Falls and, you know, all over Evanston and. People who drive quite a ways to come to us, so. It's a good thing. Yeah.
Another one of our good venues we have here in Weaver County. Yeah.
No, I tell people all the time when they are visitors that I, um, Weaver County is really lucky. Cuz there are such family friendly, family friendly venues, within a close distance, you know, you can go to other places. And there are things for families, but man, we're right here.
A lot to do.
Yeah, yeah, Dinosaur Park, Major Center, Unistation, Treehouse. Yeah, good, good things, so.
A lot of good stuff.
Yeah, well, thank you so much. I appreciate.
Thank you for being with us.
And my board says thank you too.
Give them our best, would you?
Yeah, we're lucky. We've got thirty board members who are.
Thirty?
Yeah, who are really involved. And Kenya and Dove is our board chair. And, uh, Meg Nesbit, our vice chair, and Marley Soland is our secretary for the board. So. They're great.
You got a good board.
We do. We do. Thank you.
See you later.
All right. We're back on schedule. I don't think the C and D landfill's gonna take a lot of time.
I'll run down and give that to Jamie. Thank you.
Wonder what this parcel conveyed to Huntsville townspeople about?
Oh, it's just a little, I think it's a little piece. I saw the email.
It had to be.
It's not a big deal.
No. Shouldn't be too contentious, right?
Well, it is the Upper Valley, you know.
Well, yeah. I'm sure, I'm sure Shannon will not put us in a good light, no matter what we do.
Whatever what we do. Hey, Marty. How are you, buddy?
Good, thanks. How are you?
Great.
Jessica, how are you? I I saw my reply, like, get your stuff in, these guys. Well, I guess if they don't get anything in, it's their fault. Jeez, they're all busy.
You got Jennifer coming?
Jennifer, I think is gonna zoom in. She is, uh, had. Working on some stuff with her family. But I think she's gonna try to pop in on there. Scott Parks headed over to for this, so he said, I was just his office. He said he was on his way.
He's been here a couple times already.
Yeah, I was gonna say. I think he left a trail of breadcrumbs.
Yeah, or chicken combs, one or two.
Mine shouldn't take too long.
I appreciate you reaching out to Weaver State on that.
Yeah, yeah.
And you you saw the email from Jim Craig.
Yeah, it's funny cuz I had just, uh, talked to Jim and he said he was gonna, President Mortensen had told him to get with you. We're all kind of on the same page, but we, we had a long discussion. What's interesting is that. Both the consultant and our guy Gary had already landed on that solution.
Oh, they have.
It was in there. And I did go line by line through the E V one, but he did, but yeah, it's in there, so. Uh, there's a new technology coming out, but it's still a year out. That sounds like pretty cool from the same company, but we're gonna have to go with the other one.
We probably don't have a year to wait.
We don't. Um, but the one that's current, it's good. I guess that coil. Has some mechanical issues. It goes in the floor. So as much as we drive lifts and stuff over the floor and it can cause problems. And if you break one little wire, it messes the whole system up. But it works pretty well. The other problem is it has crosstalk. So like in our rooms that divide each other up. If you do one coil, you're getting one going through all rooms, right? So then you have to do separate coils. But then if your room is completely open. Now you got three coils instead of one. You know what I mean? So it's it's a little tricky. This one is based off of, uh. Uh, you basically, uh, a signal that goes out and we'll have the thing that talks, but it works through an app. And I guess it's pretty common, but people will just get the app and then they can just. Talks to their hearing aid.
Yeah, no, that's great. I I knew that they had to have newer, you know, newer stuff out there. Been a while.
I'm glad you brought that up.
I didn't too.
Yeah, so that one's the one that we already had built in.
So they have that, they have the newer system already.
Yeah, I guess the new one coming out has beacons and you just deploy beacons in every room. And then when you walk from room to room, it's it's geo-fenced. So you just pick up that next room off the beacon and then go to the next room off of that beacon and it's through wifi. You talk to all the beacons in that room and.
Hey, you know. It's a year out.
Uh, yeah, well, the company's saying a year, but you never know what that ends up being.
Gonna say I, I'd be almost for something like that, it might be worth it to, uh. Wire everything, get it all ready to go and then just say this comes online. This is part of the phase that comes online a little later. I'd rather do it right the first time than I have to do it in twenty or thirty years.
Being that it's wifi.
Plan on still being.
No infrastructure, just buying the beacons, right? We'll be able to upgrade without the infrastructure's wifi.
Yeah, so.
So it's there.
You can get the beacons whenever they come on board.
So we can, we can upgrade at some point. Right now, we'll be buying some lanyards, but at some point we can just upgrade to beacons and. And the wifi signal and we'll be good.
No, that's good. Yeah. Sounds like they were on top, but we got Jennifer here. Hi, Jennifer.
Good afternoon.
Hope things are going well for you, Jan.
Well, it's a fun day, but. We're getting there done.
Help holler, Jen.
Thanks, I appreciate it. I think we're good.
Well, we're good everywhere. Started winter series rodeo this weekend.
Starts this weekend?
Did you get a boat?
My kids were there.
Were they? Sorry. Did I, I got, Shelley got with me and I'm like, don't get with Sharon. Sure, well, just let us know and we'll, um, and then. Of course, the conference center is all blown up with Christmas trees loading in, so it's a.
Yeah, that's that starts today, doesn't it?
Load in has been going, May is today.
When do the first bids start? That's what I wanna.
They're open online already. Bits get online already.
Yeah, but not for the trees, just for the big trips and the big prices.
Oh, is that what it is? Are you guys coming to the dinner?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna be there. Twenty-three people.
So here's the trick, be there early because the live auction stuff will go in the dinner, but people will show up early and bid on those trees. And I think there's a buyout price on most of those trees, so you need to.
Don't worry about it. I just wanna do the buyout.
Yeah, you just need to get over there and get the tree you like and.
Just hit the button on the surprise and you've got a treat.
You would ask me that. I'm sorry.
This is the year I'm upgrading.
Well, it's a good way to do it cuz I think they deliver it to your house.
I just need a little treats for my little front room. I need a tall tree.
All done.
I love the one that the girls made for our office, but it's too big.
Uh, and I think it goes for more than a thousand every year. There's most.
Are they taking this one over?
It's over. It's gone.
It's been outside my office for a couple days though.
Inside the ballroom in the front doors are where all the ones probably that you're looking for. They're a little smaller and.
Inside.
At the front door. Right in the small ballroom downstairs. Just go right in the doors going there. Yeah. That's where we.
Okay, we now have Scott Park with us. We're gonna start our two P M. Discussion regarding interdepartmental billing. Marty Smith, Jennifer Graham is online with us and Scott Park is here in person. Okay, Marty, go ahead.
All right, Commissioners, thank you. I just wanted to come in and talk to you a little bit about a previous discussion we'd had. We we committed to go meet with the sheriff and work out some interdepartmental billing for. Just based on the fair and all the services he provides and we provide, going back and. some interdepartmental billing for, just based on the fair and all the services he provides and we provide, going back and forth. Um, and after meeting with the sheriff and meeting with the division directors in my department, it, the more we tried to solve it, the more complicated it got. So, I guess I'm just here to say, I think from our perspective, and this is from all of our divisions, I think we're collectively on board. We might, we think it's best to just move to a true interdepartmental billing that follows the policy uh, within Scott, what Scott kind of keeps, you know, rolls out as a policy, but um, it's gonna cost the fair. Um, they're gonna pay the, I think it's best, we pay the full bill. And then what we need to do is just kind of start charging for some of the services that we're doing and, and.
Yeah.
I, I don't think it's necessarily ideal, um, from the sheriff's perspective, but in the long run, I think it's gonna be better for everybody because one, it's not complicated and we're following the policy. Right now, it's real complicated. I mean, just from the, I mean, we're talking about trying to trade so many things, moto school and SWAT training and swift water training and training at the shooting complex and it just gets so I just wanna, before we kind of just go with that and I get back to the sheriff, I want to make sure you guys are okay with that, but this applies across the board with all of our departments and we have people using the conference center and different departments and there's a lot going on interdepartmentally. So, I don't know, Scott, if you want to add, or Jen, if you want to add anything to what I just said.
I'll let you go first, Scott.
I don't know that I have much to add to it. I think, I mean, the policy we haven't written, we follow the statute that, that requires one fund to get compensation for work services it provides from another fund. It's fair, otherwise we have the roads department who's supported by the unincorporated areas, you know, putting a lot of time and effort and tax dollars into the fair, right? And the fair is a community, it's a countywide resource. And so that's why this policy was created to help us comply with those statutes. I think in my mind, it sounds easier, just, just to do the true, like, when the sheriff does something for you guys, they bill you for it. When you do something for the sheriff's office, you bill them for it. We want to have a good community partner. We don't want departments to start fighting against each other, well, I'm not gonna use you because you're too expensive. Um, you know, we kind of had that a little bit with the garage, but I still think it's the best way to do it. It helps us helps us keep our costs in line, helps us stay competitive and, and, you know, it, it's the best way to keep the funding straight so that we're not doing all these side deals.
Yeah, and that, that was really, um, the side deals are great until they don't work, you know, and I I, of course, want to get along with everybody and I, I don't want to fight about things, but, and I, but I just think it's better to follow the policy and do it.
Yeah, it's more straight up, it's counting one on one, in my opinion.
Yeah, but it, it also, you know, is, and coming on us to make sure we're billing true costs and that we're being fair and and stuff like that. You know, even with like the stuff that we send you guys for like inter, uh, ex, uh, extended apartment head for cost, I look at every one of those because there's been a couple that I'm like, there's no way it costs that many banquet hours. You guys need to cut that, that's, give us a true cost, right? Like, people need to be very accurate in what they're billing department to departments.
I, I don't disagree. That's the key to making it work.
Yeah.
But at the end of the day, if you do that, though, it's gonna be a lot better than trying to, he should, you know, trade, you know, trade your overpriced cat for Harvey's overpriced, uh, price goat.
Yeah, that's right. So, and I.
And they are, you're about ready to have a goat though, just to know.
Goats are good. They're good meat eaters. They keep the weeds now.
Oh, yeah.
So I, you know, I haven't been back to the sheriff. I told him we would go back and, and, uh, and he was great. I mean, you know, I met with him, we, me and Jen met with him and all the chiefs and they were like, you know, we'll work with you on the fair bill if that's what you need, and I appreciate them. They're, they're willing to work with us. Um, they've got some stuff. They would like to use our shooting complex more if we weren't billing for it, for training. Um, they're going up to Brigham for free, but, um, maybe they'll just have to keep going to Brigham for free if I, you know, on some of their stuff. Um, because we're charging, right? And so there is one thing that will live outside of the policy, uh, and that's only because Todd, uh, employs that equally across all law enforcement agencies. Um, he's allowing people that have trained to qualify and, and are, need more personal training, not the training from, say, Butler, the sheriff who trains them all.
Right.
But if they need to come out personally trained, he gives them that for free.
Okay.
But he, he employs that across all agencies, so we'll probably just keep that service there for.
That's a good service.
Cops that come and train, just so they can qualify on their own.
Yeah.
Um, but other than that, I hopefully everybody's okay with what I'm saying and it's not. Jen, do you have anything to add?
I was just gonna add that, you know, the one thing when we did go sit down with Sheriff Arbon was, you know, I think there are things that our, our employees and his employees work out at a much lower level that he did not even realize we were doing. And so, um, so he kind of thought maybe it was a little more one-sided, maybe that's what he thought, that's kind of a possibility than it really is, but I think, um, it, it's just really, I think it's the cleaner way to go. And I think that, you know, going back to reviewing those bills, this will instead of just turning complete control over this to, of the staffing levels at the fair, we'll have to have a little more input and potentially mix that up a little bit with the type of security we have, because apparently it's hard on their, uh, deputies and lieutenants and everybody. And, and it may be a little bit more than we can afford, so we'll come up with a great plan, but maybe a smarter one.
Yeah, those are good points, Jen. We were, uh, we discovered that we were doing a lot of things that maybe even the chiefs were aware, but sheriff wasn't aware, this is happening, right? And they're just calling up, well, can I do this? Sure. Well, the door, let them in and it's just kind of happening, right? Everybody's trying to be good partners, but, um, and then that, that's a really good point, Jen, me too, that, that, the chiefs were basically like, we do so many summer events, by the time we get to the fair, our guys are worn out and they don't want to do it and it's tough on us and it's hard to fill and we have to do mandatory overtime and so to Jen's point, we might augment with some
Sure.
other security and then have some armed sheriff deputies there and, or something, we'll have to figure that out.
We're gonna make a chance.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey is in your portfolio. Well, part of it.
Appreciate you following through with that. Sounds like a, a good and fair, equitable resolve.
Okay.
I like it. Commissioner Bowles, any questions?
I just think, um, how are we gonna message this? Do we just message it countywide, hey, or we're, maybe just state the policy and still a lot of departments understand that.
Scott could probably answer this better, but I, to your point, um, even internally within myself, just making sure we're following the policy equitably and being, you know, fair, and, um, I, I do think we need to make sure that departments, at least in my experience in my department, if, if you're gonna use my department, it needs to follow a policy in that it needs to be a true county department use, right?
Yeah.
Not we used to, we used to have an affiliate organization, not county affiliated, but, or not a county department, but affiliated, that would use their nonprofit status to filter other friend organizations through the theater at the nonprofit rate. Because they're affiliates, but they're not a true, right? So same kind of applies here. If, if we're gonna use each other, it needs to be the department, not a affiliated organization or a.
No.
Scott, I don't know if you have any more to say that, but I.
No, but it's pretty important.
So to your point, yeah, I think we need to maybe re-message the policy.
Also, based off of that, we had wanted to add just a line or two to the interdepartmental policy, just to clarify, like, this has got to be a county department, not an affiliate organization of the county department, like, it can't be the Utah's or the Association of Clerk Auditors.
Right.
It's gotta be Weaver County Clerk Auditor.
Weaver County.
Yeah, so I think at that time, I'll, I'll, I'll adjust the policy, get that to you, um, and then once that's done, will we just, we, we train all the departments on it, so that'll be a good refresher at the same time.
Yeah, and then we could do it, that at a, one of our direct.
Yeah. Department head meetings, yeah.
And I, I can't speak to whether other departments are following it to the letter or not. Scott probably can't.
We, we get a lot of interdepartmental bills, um, so it's, it's being done well. I think Sean's group, property management does it.
Yeah.
Um, so we're working on it and I think we're, we're pretty close. I think the sheriff's office and Culture Parks and Rec, if we can get that issue streamlined, I think we'll be about there.
There is one, there is one thing, and Jen, I don't know if you can speak to this, that maybe if we could get some help on that, when these interdepartmental buildings come through on, on, uh, like Kiss Flow, when I approve, I, it just comes to me for approval, well, Assi's telling me that it, she's not seeing it, so somehow in the flow, like, I don't want to approve something that needs to go through the steps like contracts do almost, where the people that are involved all approve it so that it's, because there's, we can catch maybe something that's out of whack or not the true cost, or these, these managers or division directors would feel more comfortable if they can see it.
That, that's easy. That's, that's actually something Quinn and I control, is that workflow, so we can usually just modify that.
That would be super helpful.
That's super easy.
Yeah, let them see what they're signing up for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Makes good sense.
Okay.
It's great.
Okay, anything else, Marty?
No.
Jennifer?
No, I am good.
Hey, thank you. No, I think you had the right direction on that. I think you'll find it probably less time involved, and I think, I mean, really, that's the policy we should follow.
Yeah, well, and although it is painful, like with the garage, I, it's made us much more efficient at the garage.
It did.
And, and it's just better all around, although I acknowledge there's pain to get from A to B, it, when you get to B, it's worth it.
Yeah, and I haven't told Sheriff Arbon this yet, so, because we committed to come and try to work it out, me and Jen, when we left his office, so. I hope he's okay with it.
Have you approved that invoice?
No, it's been sitting there waiting. I need to do that first thing.
Yeah, I would approve that first and then let's go.
Yeah, so I'm, I've been sitting on the fair bill, not paying it, hoping to come to a solution and they called cotton, they're like, damn, I paid this bill. I really intend to pay it, I just thought we could come up with a workaround, but it's.
Ask it, they're just asking.
Yeah, I like the sheriff who knows, because he was gonna maybe.
Well, Julie, Julie who tracks it, she's, she's like, is it, are they gonna pay? I mean, so she's following up, she knows it hasn't been paid yet.
Yeah, okay.
Let us go.
Perfect.
Thanks, guys.
Julie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Marty.
Thank you.
Marty, I think you're headed the right way. Thanks, Jennifer. You guys later.
Yeah.
See ya. Scott, you're, you might as well stick around, you're on this next one too.
Yep, two thirty, if Sean's, you could do thirty-two, Sean's here.
Chair, just, so you are aware.
Is someone in okay with him? Ron Brown and his band of renown?
Yeah.
Uh, well, it's Les Brown.
Les Brown?
I've never heard of Les Brown.
You've never heard of Les Brown and his band of renown?
I have.
You have?
No, I haven't. Well, I probably have, but I forgot.
Well, your grandfather did.
Yeah.
I can't believe that. It's an old, old, old. Look up Les Brown and his brand, Band of Renown.
Okay. Well, your two brand, band?
Yeah, so he played at the White City Bowl.
I remember White City.
Les Brown and his band of renown.
Play that together.
I bet.
For comparison.
Dan, Dan.
All my relatives would probably know.
Oh. Yeah. All right. Let's go ahead and start our two thirty discussion regarding the C and D landfill fee proposed. Sean Wilkinson, Bill Ross is not here.
No, Bill's out of the garage today.
Oh, good for him. And Scott Parks here. Sean, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. So Commissioner Fuller and Bill and I met with Randy Molding and his accountant last week. They are asking us to increase the rates that we charge out at our C and D landfill. So I've given you a little bit of a comparison as to what we're looking at. So our current rates are eighteen dollars a ton for the general tipping fee. The county pays twelve dollars a ton because we own the landfill. We receive two dollars and fifty cents per ton back from the revenue that they make. Uh, for. Uh, for large tires, we charge twenty five dollars. I shouldn't say a ton there, I should say a tire. I have. Yeah, per tire. And then non hazardous impacted soils. So if it's soil we can use as a top cover, but it's not. Heavily contaminated, doesn't violate EPA standards or anything, we charge eighteen dollars a ton and dead animals are twenty five dollars a ton. So those are our current rates. Randy Molding is asking us to increase the tipping fee from eighteen dollars a ton to twenty eight dollars a ton. The county's tipping fee would increase from twelve to fifteen. And the county's revenue would increase from two dollars and fifty cents to three dollars per ton. Large tires would be fifty dollars per tire and the other two items would stay the same. So I've talked a little bit to Scott. Uh, we've run this by Commissioner Frower. But we, I guess overall, we don't have an issue with the increase from eighteen to twenty eight. If you look at the other. Landfills and transfer stations around.
I think that's an important one to look at.
Yeah, let me read these off to you. So they they gave us a comparison. Our transfer station is at fifty dollars a ton right now. Salt Lake County is thirty two, Box Elder thirty four, South Utah Valley thirty six. Logan is thirty, Summit County is thirty five, Boundiful is forty, and Wasatch Integrated is thirty eight.
We're fifty.
We're fifty, yes. So what they're saying is that. That twenty eight dollars a ton would still be lower. The average there is thirty seven. We'd still be nine dollars a ton less than the average price for people to dispose of C and D material. We understand that. We we would have liked to have seen. Addition or incremental increases over time, so we didn't jump from eighteen to twenty eight.
We did a year or two.
Well, it was only a dollar increase is what we did, I believe, or a couple of dollars. What was was not much. Um. So with this, Scott and I have talked, we're we're okay with the twenty eight dollars, but if that's the case, that's a fifty six percent increase. From eighteen to twenty eight, and we feel like the county should get. Close to that as well. So our proposal would be. If the tipping fee goes to twenty eight dollars a ton, the county's. Uh, county tipping fee goes to fifteen like Randy proposed, but our county revenue goes from the three dollars that he's proposing up to four dollars. So three dollars and ninety cents is fifty six percent, so we just take that extra ten cents. That comes out to about sixty percent. But that that's what makes sense to us. If he's going to increase that much, we need to increase ours that much as well. And then we we were fine with the large tires at fifty and the other two staying the same. So that is the proposal that's in front of you right now. Now, we don't have to do any of this. We control what happens out there. Um, we agree that an increase in the tipping fee is needed. With inflation, with the cost of equipment, fuel. They need an increase, and that's, I mean, across the board, we we've increased our rates, they should increase their rates as well. It's up to you to decide how much of that increase. Uh, or how much that rate should be increased, and then how much in return the county should take back its revenue. So that's what we wanted to discuss with you today. And Scott, if you have any comments?
No, when Sean brought this to me, I asked, I just asked the question, why are we in the landfill business again? I mean, because he he um. Molding's and Sons offered to buy it from us, and Sean was telling me about some land use issues and permit issues, so.
Yeah, and and it's with Chris here. So this was permitted originally as a governmental use. Because landfills were not allowed in that zone, then we did allow them for a short period of time. That was a mistake. We took them back out. So. This is permitted as a governmental use. If we were to sell that to a private entity and they were to continue the operation. Is that something that they could do where it's listed as a governmental use?
Hmm, I will need to look into that. So to sell it to a private user. I don't know if the grandfather in the cause would work. Um. Oh, yeah, I'll try and take a look.
So that if if you don't mind looking into that, that would be the only question.
Right.
Otherwise, it is a good question that Scott brings up. Should we be in this business? Does it make sense? If we if we could. Operate it, then maybe, because I think we could make a profit doing that and support our operation. But in order for us to buy out Randy's interest in this as the operator. Uh, there's a formula in the agreement, and it would be. Uh, it's unfeasible because it's so expensive.
Well, great. Couldn't you use that? Same formula for the county?
Well, that's why we've increased. We feel like increasing it this much is appropriate. We don't. I guess we're not doing any of the work, so we don't feel like we need to. Support our entire operation off of this, if if that makes sense, but it should be fair, it should be equitable.
Do the fees generated from this account go into the enterprise fund?
They do. And actually, this is one of the reasons why I know where fifty dollars a ton, it doesn't seem like we're cheap, but. We're able to hold a line on some of those costs, because when you look at our transfer station floor, the tipping floor itself, it doesn't make any money. The money that comes for capital projects is really coming from the compost and from the C and D. That's what we're really making, like the divisions that are making enough money. The transfer station really just tries to break even. And so our improvements, you know, that we do our equipment, that's coming from this money and. So I I mean, I would say if we're gonna, if you're okay with it, I would recommend we get four dollars a ton for this, just to help us keep up with the cost of inflation.
Yeah, and just so you know, when his original proposal was the twenty eight dollars, but to increase the county by fifty cents.
Yes, to three dollars.
So after you walked out of here, we said, you know, this is pretty good, but, you know, I could see why he proposed that. But but probably not a fair for the county. This, so this puts it on equal footing for both of us.
It does. And we recognize eighteen to twenty eight is a substantial increase. But it's probably justified.
Well, didn't he say that he hasn't had a increase though for like twelve or fifteen, he talked about twelve years or something?
It's been, I don't, spent ten, twelve years in operation. We've had the one fee increase, which was from.
It went up to six dollars.
Sixteen to eighteen.
Yeah, okay, went to two bucks.
So in twelve years, going up two dollars, it could have gone up incrementally over that time.
Yeah.
The only thing I've added to this is we own the landfill, and so while by agreement. Molding's is responsible for the post closure cost liability. We own the landfill, so if anything were to happen and they went bankrupt or went out of business. We're on the hook for a potentially two to three million dollar liability for the post closure costs. Now, they're supposed to be setting aside money every year to help pay for those. We did have when Roger Larson was here, I think maybe three or four years ago, he went out and looked to verify that they were still putting in the right amount of money. I would say as part of this agreement, we would have, I'd like to just have an internal auditor.
Good idea.
Go out again and just just verify that they're still putting that amount of money in there. Otherwise, we end up holding the bag.
As I think it's part of the existing contract, we can audit them at any time.
We have the right to, we just haven't.
We haven't, well, I think that that's a big deal, because, you know, like you said, that could be a three million dollar bill.
Now, he mentioned that they were doing that when they met with us.
He did, yeah.
So we just.
Let's just verify.
Yeah, and I assume, I'm not saying that they're not, or I think that they're not, I just.
They probably are.
Just trust but verify, right? That's what we just try to do. Just make sure that.
Exactly.
Yeah. So, okay. Questions, comments?
Art, I hate to see things just go up just because it go up, you know? But the percentages are correct, the four dollars is correct. It's uh, right now at two fifty from eighteen or thirteen point eight percent. Of that, and by the time you go to twenty eight, we're thirteen point eight, the four dollars is about the same.
Yeah.
So percentage wise, that's. It's a big, it's a big deal, though. That's a big deal.
It's a lot. Is it? Is there a reason why we wouldn't entertain doing it incrementally over the next few years?
We could. That's that's up to you. Randy is saying, based on the numbers that they've run, and he gave us.
The other thing comparatively, we're. Way.
We're, yeah, we are, we're way.
We're still below anybody else, I think. What wasn't Box Elder the closest, and they were at thirty something?
Box Elder is at thirty four, Salt Lake County was at thirty two.
At eighteen, we are way below.
Uh, Logan was.
That's our point. We should have, we should have done that over the last.
That's true.
Yeah, I would argue, he should have done it over the last.
He should have done it.
That's right, that's right, that's, yeah.
Yeah, we weren't setting his rates, he was.
Yeah, he's. We have to approve the rates, but he.
Yeah, he didn't even ask for an increase.
But I mean, he was complaining about equipment and about cost, which I get, I mean, it's a fact of life.
Yeah.
So he's, there's a wage comparison that he's given in here.
Yeah.
Showing how much he he has to pay versus how much the county pays and that cost difference. Um, fuel and oil, insurance, wages, repair and maintenance, the cost of heavy equipment. There are justifications. For why he's asking.
Absolutely, yeah.
Are you okay or not?
Yeah, I'm okay.
I'm okay, yeah.
Okay. With these numbers, and I do.
As long as we hold out for the four.
Yeah.
You what?
As long as we hold out for the four dollars.
I'm not at anything. I'm not afraid.
Oh, no.
No, I think this is the plan. I mean.
Has he seen that?
No, we haven't gotten back. We we were going to have this discussion. We told him we'd get back to him.
But you know where you've compared it to the increase? The sixty percent increase.
Yep.
Yeah, no, our proposal back to him is here's the number. If you want your twenty eight, the county gets four, not the county's in the go, you know, I. Whatever increase they want, we give.
Proportionately speaking, we just want to make sure that we're receiving percentage wise the same proportion. Eighteen to fifty, four dollars is that number?
Yes.
It's a little different, but that's about correct.
Yeah, it's close, pretty close.
And Randy, you expected us to come back at six?
Of course you did.
You know, you were expected us to come back at six.
Then why aren't we coming back at five?
Coming back at four.
Well, we can, we can come back at whatever you'd like.
That's fine.
Are we gonna negotiate?
But we're gonna, we're gonna.
Yeah, go higher.
I don't think, in in this case, you hold the the key, so there's not really a negotiation. Uh, because if you say four is the number, then four is the number.
Right, but we'd call it and say twenty eight bucks, what the crap? Another ten bucks a ton? Come on. Pull a Jenkins on it, shoot us.
You know, I've been talking to Kelly Larkin lately.
So.
Cut a cross.
Chris, when you get back to us, we'll, we'll look at that a little bit more. And see what makes sense.
But if we're not even in the, the, I mean, we may or may not even want to sell it, right?
For sure.
Kicking back some money per ton, so.
Absolutely.
I just asked the question, why are we in the business if, I mean, if they were willing to make us a great deal for it, maybe we'd entertain. Selling it to them, but then.
We'd have to find out if they could even operate if we did, which I'm not opposed to doing that.
Yeah.
Right.
So what what happens to the county position since we own it? If they call us up one day and say, look, you know, we just can't afford to do this anymore, we're out. Then we we have to then staff it out there and put our own people out there. What's what's our option at that point?
We could contract it out to another entity, or we could do it ourselves.
I mean, I don't expect that to happen, but.
Okay, maybe I missed something. Hopefully, this doesn't sound dumb, but it's because it's a government listed as a governmental use. Can we just change the zoning?
The the issue is, and and we could, we could add that use as a conditional use. If we do that, then others in that area will do the same thing, and we're not sure that we want that area to be full of land.
Is there any, but couldn't you make the zone really as small as we?
As big as the landfill?
I I mean, I guess you could re, you could.
Your posters.
It's, I mean, we gotta be a little careful. I don't want to use, I don't want to use the word spot.
Right, right, that's, oh, so that's what we should.
Buddy.
Probably tonight.
I guess you could create a landfill zone and say, here's our landfill zone.
I like it.
Well, but it has a landfill there, right? So just you're essentially grandfathering it in through your zoning, saying, look, we don't want landfills out here, but this one's already there, so we're changing use of that area to be a landfill, now we don't have to operate it as a government. But that's, that just depends if you guys want to.
But then we lose the revenue, right?
True, that's what I'm saying. So it depends if you want us to sell.
You want your cash now, or do you want an income?
We'd get.
What if we lease it? What if we lease it to him for fifty years and we take a down payment on the lease, then we lease it for so much every year? Then we still, you know, that way that he still has it. Leads to own.
It only has forty seven years left.
They're saying forty nine.
Oh, forty nine, okay, so forty nine years, it's gonna be full and of no value anyway, right?
We lease it to him for forty years.
Yeah, I mean.
We're kind of leasing it to him under this scenario.
The contract that we have right now, you're right, and the contract we have right now does not go out forty years. So they have to renew that agreement within the next.
I was just coming up with ideas.
I'm okay. All right. Sounds like you got it.
Okay, green light. I'll get back to Randy with those numbers and we'll.
He had to expect that.
I I agree.
He's not dumb.
Yeah. Yep.
Harvey wanted six, but he's gonna compromise it for.
Definitely had to talk Harvey off the cliff.
So he watches this video and then he says.
Yeah. That's right.
All right. Since you're up here, the next one, West Weber, Western Weber Road and Bridge Option, Sean Gary Myers. Looks like you got a whole group coming, Sean.
Yes, and this is with the landowners from Western Weber County. So you had asked.
Oh.
Brent Edwards to get that group gathered together.
Okay. I'm with you now.
So that's who's coming in at three.
Okay, so we have some landowners coming, too.
Yes.
Ah, this will be a fun one, too.
Come on in. Commissioners, we've got Ron Brown here.
Oh, great.
Are you okay just continuing this for just a little bit?
Sure.
Hi, Ron.
Hi, Ron.
Ron, how are you?
Good, you?
Good.
So come on, we've talked a little bit about the rate structure. Sounds like what we're going to do is. Allow the increase up to twenty eight dollars. Our portion will go from twelve to fifteen, but we will ask for four dollars back instead of the two fifty that we're getting. Four dollars to come back. But I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about. The operation, just some of the things that you've seen and what your thoughts are on that C and D landfill.
Yeah, I've got a lot of concerns myself, and I've had for a while. Stuff going out there that's not supposed to go out there.
Like, like what?
Loads of exercise equipment going out there. That's not construction material. Uh, I've got pictures, but I don't have them with me today. They're on my phone, but I gave them to Robert, and I can't find the the file on it, but. As I go out to make my tour, John had me going out and looking. There would be mattresses, there would be car tires. That kind of stuff can't go out in in them landfills. At the transfer station, we separate that stuff. We separate any toys, plastic equipment and stuff like that from yards, because that's not supposed to go out there.
Yeah.
There's stuff like that going out there. And then my drivers had reported to me at one point, and they dug a big hole kind of out in the middle. And there was a truck that backed in, they filled it, and. So it's just stuff like that that I've noticed going out. I haven't been out there for quite some times, other than when we rode the truck out there. Is I'd been asked if I go out, I'm supposed to make an appointment, they don't want me out there. So you know they're they're not doing something. They're doing something wrong because they don't want me out there. You know, so I talked to Sean, and Sean just told me to go ahead and start going back out and. Seeing what's going on, but there's a lot of stuff going out there that's not supposed to. Their transfer station across the street from us, if you go and you watch, there is uh. Compactors and stores and stuff going over there. They have taken Home Depot holes. Brahmas. Well, that's retail to me. That's not construction. He claims that he's went down and got the okay from the state to take that stuff. But you have chemicals, oils, paints, stuff like that that goes. You know, into there, and that's, that's not a lined landfill.
Yeah.
You're gonna get, it's gonna get into the waterway because you've still got a lot of people that has uh wells out there. You've got the lake that's right there, and then we used to get the salt from. Uh, it's Compass now, and. Him and the guy that was hauling it was buddies. Well, they went down and got the okay to start taking it there, but it has a dye in it, and we was always told you can't take it. Out there because it's gonna, as it gets wet, it's gonna leach, leach out, so. You know, there's just a lot of stuff like that. I have concerns on stuff going out that shouldn't be going out there.
Yeah.
And then it's getting real soft, the higher they get. The more scarier it's getting when we dump trucks out there. They're not compacting it. They're bored. They're building forty to sixty foot lifts. And I hear there's still another fifty years. Life on that landfill. I don't see it. I, maybe another two to five years, the rate they're going, so there's just a lot of concerns I've had over the years.
Yeah.
So.
So Commissioner, it might be good to bring Randy and Scott.
Yeah.
And sit down with you and Ron, me and Bill, and. Talk through this, talk through these concerns and see what's going on and.
Like to hear what they say about that.
Yeah.
And I think we have an opportunity now with this revision. That if we need to put something.
Yeah, I'm right.
In that, then said, look, you know, you're. Making sure that this increase only goes into effect. If you see you're putting any illegal, I mean, the county, let's say that. Whatever you say, that leach, the one that worries me is the Great Salt Lake.
Right.
Much attention's on the lake right now. The state goes out there and finds out that we've got oil or whatever, boy. We gotta.
Saying we hold the permits, so who's liable?
We've got a liability.
They're gonna come after us, you know, so that's my concerns.
Yeah, we we have the authority under the existing agreement to go and give those inspections, and they have to. Yeah, we, we have the authority under the existing agreement to go and give those inspections, and they have to allow us to do that, so. We have the ability to do what we need to, but I think it would be good if we brought them in and. Put that in conversation.
We need to let them know we're gonna start enforcing that provision and whether we send, you know, you will allow Ron to come out. You know, once a month or twice a month, whatever it is, or, you know, basically whenever he feels it's necessary.
Right.
Not on a pre-scheduled basis.
Saying on that, he wants to take me around the landfill and.
No.
Just as soon make my own.
You're the inspector, as far as I'm concerned.
That's how I see it, and every time I would go out there, can I help you? No, I'm just out here looking.
Yeah.
And then he'd get angry and everything and so.
Anger.
But I was still doing my job of going out and making sure they're taking what they're supposed to.
Yeah, no. Well, that could hurt us two ways, liability and then they're taking revenue.
Yeah.
From the transfer station.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And this is, we're getting ready on this guaranteed waste stream. We don't.
Yeah.
This is.
Yeah, we gotta get a handle on this.
You know, and just soon have the salt back, that was an asset to us, cause if I had a truck. Headed to Willa that was light, we always put it on, on it to get our weights, so we're hitting our weights, I don't have that.
So do you know, did they get permission from the state to put the salt there?
That was what my understanding was from Scott. That, that they had went and got the okay from the state to take that.
Can we verify that, Sean?
Yeah, we can verify all of this.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And we can call the people out of the state, they should be able to tell us right off the bat.
It should be part of the permit.
Yeah, look at the permit, can they take this or not?
Right.
And we should probably have a copy of that permit when we meet with them, that we can say, look, here's. The items you can take, here's the things you can't take.
Right.
So there's no confusion.
Yeah, seeing, I, I, I've always felt that. You know, it should, they should have had to come through us to get any permission to take stuff, it's like the tires that they went and got the okay to. Take tires, you know, loads of tires, well, that takes your airspace.
They, and they did come here for that.
Oh, they did.
Yeah, that was approved.
They did, yeah.
Yeah, by the, by Commissioner, so.
But when, you know, when them trucks are going in, they were taking car tires, which you can't put.
Right.
Vehicle tires in that landfill.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we appreciate you bringing that to us, Ron.
And I'll get the pictures put together for you.
Okay, that'd be great. Uh, I, I'll set up a meeting, Commissioner, and we'll, we'll talk through the. B increase as well as these other issues.
Yeah. Opportune time to do it.
Okay, Ron, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you. Thanks for what you're doing.
You're doing a great job out there for us.
We're trying, we're trying.
I gotta take the load out there, one of these thirty seven.
We better.
You did, thank you, Scott.
All right. You, we got our group coming up on. Well, we got that, I guess we got members of the public coming too, don't we?
Yes, we do. Jessica didn't I give you that? You're welcome.
This is Pecaro again?
No, this one is.
Oh, this is on the other south side of the track.
Yeah, this is where that bridge is going to go.
Oh, great.
So has Brent kinda been heading this up?
He, he is, so after that work session, I believe Commissioners asked him to go and talk to those landowners. And bring them in so we could have that conversation.
Everybody.
Yep.
Find out, cause there was two different stories, as I recall.
Yes.
You know, who wanted it, who didn't want it, he said, he said.
Sean, will you take a peek at your email really quick before this session?
Yes.
Okay.
No. Not to you.
No, huh. No.
Okay.
So we're ready, whatever.
You ready? All right, welcome everyone. We're gonna start our three P M. Discussion regarding Western Weaver Road and Bridge Option. Sean Wilkinson is with us. Sean, you move the other side.
Yes.
Gary Myers.
Right here.
There's Gary Culver there. Rick's here. Charlie's here. Charlie's not here. B Burton, Brent Edwards. Brent, you wanna? Do's Andrew and we know who Andrew is, the rest of these good folks.
Yeah, you bet. So here with us are some landowners out in that area. I got John DiGiorgio. Andrew Faverro, Mr. Doug Heslop, and I'm Doug's grandson, Trevor.
Welcome. Appreciate you taking time out of your day to be with us. So Brent, you can kind of give the background on this. This is discussion about a potential. Uh, alignment of a future bridge going across somewhere out in West Weaver. Eighteen hundred, sixteen hundred, there's been some debate on. You know, he said, she said, we wanted to bring the landowners in to see really where, you know, where if anything was. Headed, where are we headed? So, Grant, go ahead.
Yep, I appreciate your time and yeah, just all that discussion. I felt it was good to get the landowners in front of you guys and kind of get their feelings and how it affects their operations and stuff on that east side. Of the river. Um. We met with all of the landowners at a week and a half ago at my place one night and kind of went through this map and discussed everything. Um, had a really good discussion. So the the main landowners that it affects are who's here with us. And then also um, the Martinis, Dean and Steve Martini. And then Kenny McFarland um, are are the main, are all the landowners that it affects in this area. So we had the discussion. Um. Appreciate Charlie, Rick for letting, printing these maps off for us and getting that going for us. So I appreciate the staff's help on that. So basically where our discussion went, and I can let these guys fill in as it went, you know, their main. You know, as we talked that night, their main preference or would like to see is a twenty five fifty alignment of that going out. Um, a lot of the same landowners. Own the property here as well as over there, but just in, you know, disruption of operations and, you know, future, they were, they're all. Majorly supportive of a twenty five fifty option, but if it comes right down to it and it does have to go, you know, further over here on the. On the northern end there, the eighteen hundred alignment is what they per, what they want to see and they want to see it straight. They don't want the curve out there going through. And and curving over to a sixteen hundred alignment and coming back. Um, just as we look at the properties and and where it all comes through, you know, that. It's already a dividing line on that alignment through where the, where fields change and, you know, it would be a lot less detrimental to their operations. If it stayed through that. Well, besides John's up here is where that first part there, it'll cut through several of his fields directly, you know, cut them in half essentially.
That's what you're talking about, the twenty five fifty alignment or the eighteen hundred alignment?
Okay. That's eighty eight, this is mine right now.
There's some smaller maps. It's hard to see on there, but if you guys want those Charlie made little.
But it's not the statement everybody's sticking to the eight, twenty five fifty first and eighteen hundred second.
So Mike, Mike went into you guys, this twenty five fifty is eventually supposed to go out and. Connect to Legacy, correct? When Legacy comes. So you're already gonna have to bridge a river somewhere right there. To get to twenty five fifty.
Well, it's supposed to tie into it. So whether or not it goes through has not yet been decided. Up till now, and I'm kind of speaking out of turn for Charlie, maybe just a little bit, but up till now. We've been planning on eighteen hundred or sixteen hundred, depending on what we go with. The reason is, is there's a major realignment of Twenty First Street. Right now to tie up into eighteen hundred south. And we've been preserving a hundred foot corridor westerly along the eighteen hundred foot south, eighteen hundred south, excuse me. Um. We do have some county right of way on. And I get my coordinates mixed up, but I believe it's, is it sixteen hundred that goes out there where the dirt road is now? So that's why the intention was, was to, was to weave it up to that, to utilize what little right of way we have. Um, otherwise we're looking at exacting right away from folks as this happens, which no one ever loves to see. Or purchasing right away from folks, which still people don't like, but they don't like, they they prefer that over an exaction. Does that make sense?
Well, it it does. That's why we. I mean, that's why I said the twenty five fifty route. I mean, I I care. I can't say I don't care where it goes. I care because it's a, you know. All this land you're going through, doesn't matter, all of us sitting here, they're all century plums. They're all, they've been here in the county. Well over a hundred years. The eighteen hundred corridor uh, affects me the most going through my property. It cuts, it cuts eighty acres right in half.
Yeah.
Uh, but. East of me. Up to forty seven hundred, you've got one house and you go through another property owner Timothy, but I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about what's going west. If you go straight down eighteen hundred, once you get to fifty five, that's actually a lot of uh. Boundary line between Kenny McFarland and uh. Doug. Or Kenny and Dean Martini, I'm sorry. That's actually the natural. Well, it's the actual boundary line change. And my concern is if we're gonna go down eighteen hundred, let's make it straight. Cause we already know all of us sitting here, what twelve street is with them curves in there. I don't care how gradual they are, you're setting yourself up for a disaster for traffic flow. I mean, you guys don't live out there, but in the winter it gets so foggy that you can't see for me to you. I mean, we even have, I have trouble finding my way around. You know, in the morning or late at night and I've been, I've been raised there my whole life. So if we're gonna go down eighteen hundred, my preference is we go straight. I mean, me being the major landlord that's gonna lose, but we don't really affect. Anybody else. Let's don't. Come through part of mine and jog and go through somebody else's and jog and go through somebody else's. Was, let's just put a lot eighteen hundred. There's a lot of irrigation infrastructure and field drains that's gonna have to be taken into consideration. Cause if we do the eighteen hundred, I mean, I want to put back so I can still farm what I've got left. And then there's, I mean, that that's, that's peanuts compared to the overall picture, but I want to bring that up because there's field drains that's gonna have to stay connected or be reconnected. And some irrigation infrastructure that's gonna have to be changed. And I want to make sure that everything is down in writing or on record before this goes much farther. So that I'm perfectly clear, you know, what I want.
So there's one other piece to the puzzle on this, Johnny, and I'm just, I'm not trying to be the antagonist here.
Right.
I feel like that's how some of my comments are coming across and that's not my intention, but whenever you cross a river. It can be a little tricky. Whenever you build a bridge, it can be tricky. I've talked to a lot of, I'm not a structural engineer, but I've talked to a lot of them. I know a lot of them and they say the best thing you can do is bridge. A river without the river knowing it's being bridged. So that being said. The eighteen hundred south you've drawn right here. Look where that puts you crossing the river right there.
Right on the bend.
Right on that big oxbow, right? Which, which is. Less than ideal, right, to cross right there.
All depends. You travel around the country, they've got bridges over rivers everywhere. I don't want that to be the factor. Because I know the county's gotta pay for part of this bridge or hell, but to, the way I understand it is the developer's gotta fit the most of that bill for the bridge. Now me being up here giving up all my ground, that, you know, when I've been there, a hundred and almost a hundred and twenty years, my family has, for me to give up all this. To get this, I think I'm giving up a lot more here than what a couple of developers are out here that don't give a rat's fanny what happens to all this up here. Eventually, it's all gonna be developed. But if we're gonna do something, let's do it right. Let's don't do what we got on Thirty First Street where we come a direct. Connection to the freeway, then we come to Midland Drive. It's not a straight shot to the freeway. You've gotta go. Four thousand, you've gotta come up thirty five hundred, you've gotta turn to get an exact flow to the freeway. Let's try to alleviate that.
Well, and and that's what kind of led us to the, to the other option of putting it as. Where had the fact going forward that we have a partial right of way out there and if you look at where it crosses right there and extend that out to the river. That's not that horrible of a crossing spot right there.
Uh, that's detrimental to me. I I'm definitely. I'm adamantly, I'm adamantly opposed at sixteen hundred. For two reasons, that puts me completely out of business. Because that's, that's my home operation. That's my home base. Not only that, you're gonna go through part of Heslops. You're gonna go through part of Kenny McFarlands and everybody is gonna lose. Now, does this guy have enough power? And clout? To make that decision when we're the ones that's gonna lose and he's the one to gain with the development all the way out?
Good question, Johnny.
Is your, is your right of way down the county road down that dirt road, is that wide enough for your new existing road? No, it's not. You're still gonna have to purchase property. And a fair amount of.
And I believe our right of way, Johnny, on eighteen hundred pretty much ends right here at this bend in the road, right?
You know, this is all, this is fifty one hundred west, so this is all county road.
Well, meaning, but we'd have to buy something through these buildings.
Right, well, so, so going through here, you've got a house right here that's Wayne's yard lines.
Yep.
And then you go through uh. Timothy's forty there, uh, which I I talked to Bart a little bit this summer about it. You know, he says, well, I guess it's time to build town, townhomes. I don't know. I don't want to see that.
Sure.
But. If we're gonna do this right there, we're gonna do this. You know what? Let's just disrupt. One farmer, one landlord, because I'm fifty eight, how much longer I'm gonna do this? I don't know, not saying I'm gonna quit tomorrow, but why? Screw around down here with Kenny's ground and cut it all up and chop it all up? Or the Heslop property?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I just, I think you guys are putting way too much emphasis on the cost of this bridge uh. Just. To get across the river. I mean, I I realize it's a lot, it's, it, the river's narrower down there. I realize it, but what does, what is traffic flow? How is traffic flow affected? You know, crossing then you come up here, you got, you gotta go through Heslops, you gotta come back through Kenny McFarlands. And you're, you're still gonna come through the majority of the part of mine to start with.
Yeah.
I guess just to put a dip on another light on this, you know, look at this yellow over here. We've got a big main corridor right there. We moved this in, we've got two corridors right here, you know, that are gonna be big time. East west corridor right there next to each other. You know, if you look at the way that it's filled out on the east side, you've got Welch Street. You know, twenty five fifty's got a connection, which will soon be a full blown interchange at Twenty Fourth Street. Then you go down a little bit further and you've got Thirty First Street, which through the jag you get to four thousand. Look at the way those big corridors are spread out. And I I guess the question to me is, is, you know, in long term planning, why aren't we looking at more of a twenty five fifty alignment for a, a main? What would it be? Is that a main art, what does Charlie call main arterials?
Well, the spacing's just better. Um, the spacing between twelve street, the railroad tracks and twenty five fifty is just better. The only thing that saves this. Is the fact that it swoops back over to the south and joins the end of Wilson Lane there at the, at the school bus barn. Other than that. This, this being a more straight shot and especially once the the connections made at the freeway. Is, is better because look at this property. I mean, okay, so we're, we're kind of in the middle of this process of transitioning from agriculture to. Uh, residential, commercial, whatever, you know, all the development that comes with it. But for now, while agriculture's still somewhat vital. Look at the quality of this ground over here versus this over here. You've already, on this corner right here where our barns are, this is already a horrible intersection right here. I mean, you, you come out of this barn. And it's, it's terrible, the traffic flow that's here.
Where are you at there, Andrew? What, what west?
This is fifty one hundred.
Oh, you're fifty one hundred.
Yeah.
Twenty five.
And twenty five fifty.
Yeah, so you're coming down twenty five fifty.
Yeah, and this is just a ninety degree corner right here.
Yeah.
So you've already got, you've already got a mess here and you've got property down here that as far as its ag value. It's, you can look at it. I mean, it's salt.
Yeah.
And, and so it's really this one here, and I'm, I'm not here to pick a side or choose anything. I'm just looking at this logically. And I'm thinking the spacing to me makes more sense because it gets this over here away from twelve street a little bit. Your flow will come. Come uh, uh, south to go east. It spreads it out a little bit and you're not cutting through anything here that, that, that anybody's really holding any high value on. Yeah, we got a little farm around here. Our good farms here. I mean, just like I said, look at these, look at these qualities of, of, of what's being grown here. And so. While we're still hanging on to the. Ag, ag. And I, I'm saying the dream of ag because it's really going away and it's going away quickly. You know, this just, this just makes some sense here. And as far as our sacrifice goes, we've already sacrificed because this is terrible right here. I just assume see this road expanded. However far it's gonna go right now, and especially from up here at, at thirty five hundred, at least down to here. And it really should expand until this happens. It really should expand across fifty one hundred because. Everybody comes across on fifty one hundred. I shouldn't say everybody, but there's a lot of traffic that comes across on fifty one hundred and goes. East on twenty five fifty and in the afternoon, it's the opposite flow.
I agree. So. It is for me, I never, you know, this was in. The Mr. Jenkins portfolio and for our team, I never really could understand eighteen hundred. Except for that I knew it was gonna tie into a major freeway. Intersection. That's a huge deal.
Right.
One day, I think Twenty Fourth Street's gonna get finished. From Ogden City. I mean, I don't know what the most recent holdup is. I know it has to do with drains and the U P and blah, 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 blah. But it's the law for me, it's the law of thirteen to fifteen in Weaver County, pretty simple. Thirteen to fifteen onto twelve. Twenty five, twenty five fifty, thirteen to fifteen onto twenty five fifty, puts us about four thousand. Midland, whatever, thirteen to fifteen onto that, puts you about fifty six hundred. Out there in Roy where that big deal is there. And then you got. Out there in Roy where that big deal is there, and then you got. Eighteen hundred. Davis County makes some smart alley remark.
Eighteen hundred, but what you've also got over there, sorry Commissioner, but is SR one nine three two.
That's right.
Yeah, and so, but that, which is, that's a great, which is about thirteen to fifteen blocks, and so if we go back. I really think those people back in the pioneer times that laid out those things. In big squares, I think we need to stay at thirteen to fifteen out there, and the same thing going west. You're not gonna change that freeway, but it's fairly straight going out there, therapy thirteen fifteen going out there would work for me. That's just my. Was probably three cents, I was gonna say two cents. You get a little extra.
Yeah.
That's all I got, thanks.
Sharon, do you have any comments or?
Yeah, I, I agree. My question for the planning department, because this precedes me. Is um, whether or not twenty five fifty was part of the conversation when this general plan was adopted or? And why it ended up not being there?
It's on there.
It's on, it's, that's on there, also the. Connection that gets us up.
So there's a plan for two bridges.
Correct, there would be two connections in that area. And typically what's gonna happen is development's gonna drive this.
Right.
Um, you know, we're not in the road business to actually go in and put it in. That's why we're looking at the one o- over here, and you know, Gary has some valid points, and I can see your points on it too. You know, as I look at it, it ultimately comes down to um, connection on to the interstate. And that's the biggest thing is where do we have the full interchange, where do we don't? And you know, when we get to twenty fourth street, eventually we're gonna have a full interchange there, but the railroad is holding things up.
Yeah, but I think by the time this road ever goes in, that thing's gonna be.
It will, yeah. Well, hopefully.
Well.
Railroad can be hard to deal with. Okay, so.
But I like, I like that myself.
So the, the, the other point of that, what you're talking about, Rick, is, is the same, you'd have the same thing with twenty five fifty, she's got over on four thousand. You have to make that jog over to Hinckley Drive to go up to the freeway. On twenty five fifty for the time being at nineteen hundred, you have to make the jog over to Wilson Lane. And head up.
Yeah.
And so, you know, with eventually hoping that the interstate.
When it becomes a full interchange, then it is a straight shot.
Yeah.
And speaking.
Which you're really, sorry.
Oh, no.
Which you're really never gonna get if you go to eighteen hundred, cause it's always gonna jog over to.
And twenty five fifty, you look at the infrastructure we currently have. And what's already planned to go, I mean, you've already got a three lane section plus from thirty five fifty going to the east.
Correct.
There's a project in the works, I understand Gary or Sean, that's gonna bring that to forty three hundred west now. You know, so eh, we're, we're a lot closer here with a three lane section on twenty five fifty than we ever are on eighteen hundred. And you know, the, the infrastructure it would take to update that through eighteen hundred, even though, you know, if we are asking for a hundred foot right away through there. Uh, it's, there, there's a lot of infrastructure to be built along that alignment. To get them up there.
I know that um, there's some funding, talking to Brooke for the connection from twenty first street. It's jogging over to eighteen hundred, but it's not gonna be a straight connection, you're gonna have that, that jog in there. And I think that's on the dock, it was two years, Sean, is that what you said?
The West Haven project? Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure the funding, yeah, I think it is two years.
I thought that was twenty twenty five.
Yeah, it seemed like that's what she had mentioned.
So Andrew. Let's look at your twenty five fifty alignment. And so who are the players impacted there besides you guys? Well, on, on this side, it's us, DWR, and then this is what you, what's the Gibson family down here. Some of this has been sold, but it, pretty much all of it is retained by the Gibson family. The Gibson, the Taylor Gibson family.
Right.
And uh, and they, I point over here because they live over here. Yeah, well, actually, this is Chuck. This is, this is the other guy Gibson, so. I don't see that they. Anything that happens down here will be more than what they've made on it in the hundred and something years that they've owned it. You have a few smaller parcels, excuse me, this is, this is Dave and Tom here, then you have some smaller parcels along here, again, same thing. And right here, and, and don't quote me on this, but I know that. This is the section line, section line or quarter section line, I can't remember, I think it's section line. But we've already on our side. Is, we've already give up sixteen feet, we've already moved our fence a long time ago, and this road is, is uh. Uh, gravelled.
Yeah.
Because they, to get down here to DWR and, but it's always been, it's been that way, my grandmother actually did that. Decades ago, probably a few decades before I was born, and I'm an old guy. So that's, that's there. I don't know what it looks like as far as ownership goes, I don't know if it was, if it was, you know, cha- uh. Give, given over to the county or not, but the fence on our side has already moved back to the south.
To the south, yeah.
Yeah, and this is, in this ground here, and especially this side of it is very marginal, already, we talked, you know, in our meeting at Bren's. You know, Kenny was good with this.
Kenny's good with that. Well, I, I think for a couple of reasons. To me, the only one that really makes sense here for, again, is the twenty five fifty. I just take a look at the quality of the dirt there, as Andrew's pointed out, and if we're gonna try to preserve any farm ground in Weaver County, which I. You know, um, think is very important, we need, as long, and it's gonna go away, but. The quicker we go out and plan these. You know, corridors down on our more unproductive ground, that will then allow the market to fill in. Where they should, which again, in my mind, development should be on our unproductive ground, they don't need. You know, eighteen inches of topsoil to put a home on.
Yeah.
So I think that serves a couple of purposes, uh, at least in my mind, and then. The connection to the freeways, you know, that's a big deal. You've got, you know, I hate going to these communities where you have to make three left turns and one right, before you can get to the freeway. And I happen to have a home down in St. George that goes through the exact scenario. They never invented a street that went straight. But so, I, I, I think that's a perfect sense, plus, you know, if you look at cost, if you look at the cost of going through John's place. Um, and regardless of what that bridge costs, it's gonna be cheaper in the long run to go that way. At least that's my gut, uh, gut feeling. The end, the end result, unless John's willing to donate that to somebody, which probably not. Would uh. He's pretty filler drop, he is. He comes from a good family out there.
Not really. Comes from a good family, yes, me being generous, no.
So I. So are you other guys kind of in favor with that? I mean, what, again, this is a two edged sword, because. If that was, if that was the alignment, the value of your property goes up quite a bit. Ag ground versus townhouse ground, which I'm not saying I'm in favor of townhouse, but I'm saying you compare the two properties. There's substantial difference in price. So you're looking into your four oh one K, as I call it, you know, when do you cash your land four oh one K, and you may wanna give that some consideration.
We had a good discussion about that when we met the other night, and I, I, you know, as John mentioned, these are generational farms here.
Yeah.
And the next generation, you know, like Kenny, Doug's kids.
Yeah.
Um, Steve Martini's just taking the oper- operation over from his dad, you know, they're in the business to hopefully stay in the business for a while. And I think that's kind of where we went with that discussion of, you know, that someday, this is gonna all be home, someday this road will probably go in.
Yeah.
But if we're looking at it over what, you know, one versus the other or timing, you know, that's where that twenty five fifty alignment. Kind of sticks out there, that kind of the conversation we have.
Tell me, help me, just remind me why some of that area is salt, grass and others not, is it the elevation? Is it the white, the salt out there? Is it because it's lower?
Yeah, it's, it's lower, and then over there you have a lot of river, river wash. I mean, look at how that, that river's shaped there. I mean, it's broke over the, you know, hundreds of thousands of years, whatever gone. And it's, it's created that, it's created a better area over there, because really, John, you correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of that ground, other than it needed to be leveled. The quality of soil was pretty consistent all the time. Right?
There, for, for the most part.
Yeah.
But besides being leveled, I mean, pretty much, probably ninety percent of the ground I own has got field drains underneath it.
Yeah.
About six feet deep to pull the groundwater out to keep the mineral from. I mean, you can over time, you can take those spots that you're saying are white with alkali, I mean, it takes a long time and a lot of work. But you can actually bring that into production if you put field drains in it and then, you know, do some.
That's a ton top. I, I realize that, I mean, you look on a map and you look, some of these things have been developed and not. I just wondered why the, the, the wa- why naturally it's white. And as I looked on, this is a great map, as I looked on Google, there's, there's a lot of water. On heavy years, there's a lot of water out in there too. I mean, there's a lot of water out in there. So whoever would develop that out there would have a lot of, they know, there wouldn't be any basements, that's for sure.
Hazel Senior on the topic of water.
That's not pivot. I'm happy to talk to you about water, but.
Well, this, this is really a double edged sword for me. Because I'm the, I'm the.
With all due respect, that's not what this commission does though, sorry, Mr. Chair, we're not in the water business. You guys are in the water business.
I gotta suggest you.
Okay, let's hear it.
But back to this, this is really a double edged sword for me, because I got, my kids don't want nothing to do with that, with my farm. I mean, when I'm done, it's done. It, it, it's over. I mean, I wanna hold on to it as long as I can, and you made the comment that, you know what, if this road goes through my property. I'd probably at least double the value.
Yeah.
Or, or, or more, I mean, I, I understand that, that, that's a, that's, it's really a double edged sword for me. Because I don't know what Andy's family's gonna do, but Kenny McFarland is a young farmer, Steve Martini is a young farmer. That's why I made the suggestion, if we're gonna go through down eighteen hundred, not, you guys were talking twenty five fifty back to eighteen hundred. If we're gonna go down through that, yeah, I'm being generous right here, go through mine and leave them guys alone. Because there's no sense of putting two or three of us, four of us, out of business. Let's just do one and call it good.
But, but would, you wouldn't prefer eighteen hundred?
No.
Over twenty five fifty.
And, and Andy talked a lot, at this meeting we had at Bren's, we talked a lot about the spacing, you know, how things lay out. Andy's the one that brought that up, and if you look at it on a map, you done the, you done the thirteen fifteen rule, you know, where does that end up? The commissioners and the planning before you guys really screwed up when they had twenty first street. Because when that was built, it was pretty much a straight shot, straight west, but now clear down to thirty five hundred, you got nothing but some divisions now, and that's not gonna fly.
Yeah. Oh, do West Haven owns, West Haven has in, uh, adopted into their city or annexed into their city? Thirty five hundred west out there?
About, not quite.
Okay. So there is that piece, let's just say from thirty five to nineteen hundred west, they have to be on board with two.
West Haven only goes to twenty seven hundred on eighteen hundred's alignment.
Talking about twenty five.
They've already built theirs up though.
Been on, that's because of that money, that's all because of the WACO money.
Still working on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they went. Hundred and now the county's.
On west, on twenty five fifty?
That's just our portion.
So we're going, so the, so twenty five fifty, we're going now from thirty five to forty seven.
Forty three first.
Forty three. There you go. How wide is that, one hundred, one twenty? Always start with seven.
Yeah. Well, the intention for eighteen was.
I realize you got since, we got their direction before.
Yeah. And we have already um. Received dedications. For that hundred feet on portions of eighteen hundred between thirty fifth and forty three, well, maybe even forty seven. Some portions through there.
I thought those were only eighty, like through Winston Park and Stagecoach and all that.
And not like a judge thirty to fifty is.
They, they're not built to a hundred foot cross section.
Twenty five. The other, the other thought to consider. Is.
Yeah, me too.
I realize. I always come across as the antagonist, and I'm not here trying to ruin Johnny's life or Johnny's day. I realize twenty five fifty is the preferred alternative. At this point in the discussion. The fact may happen that, like you mentioned, Johnny, as you phase out. Eighteen hundred may happen just on its own. Again. And, you know, maybe we just keep that line on the paper. Not to push you in any direction, Johnny. But just so that on other ends of it, that you're not. It's not affecting you, we still preserve that plan so that we don't end up in a boat we're in with twenty first street. Being blocked off.
I think that's a good idea, just like the general plan has it, but I, I think of these guys' point, we keep up, but let's straighten it out.
So what, what did you wanna see happen from this meeting, Bren?
I just wanted these guys in front of you to get their opinion, you know, we had a lot of developers talk. You know, about where to come across and this and that, and it really affected these guys more than it affects anybody, you know. And I just wanted these guys to be able to come in front of you guys and, and get the feelings and how it truly, you know. Could be detrimental to their operation.
Great information to hear it from a horse's mouth rather than second hand.
Well, and, and I think it's important to line this stuff up now.
Yeah.
Because we've ended up with messes. I mean, that Hinckley Drive thing, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That should go straight west. When you hit that intersection at Midland, it, it looks like the engineer looked right straight down there and said. That's where that road's gonna go.
Yeah.
And it, and it don't. It goes to houses now.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we, and I think that's the important part for us. Is, okay, you know, really what's our preferred, and if I'm hearing everybody, twenty five fifty is probably our preferred, but I also agree with. What was said, Johnny.
Lose the line on the map.
At, at the end of the day is, like a, a good old friend of mine, former governor used to tell me. The market will dictate where a lot of this goes. I mean, we can help in that decision process, but money talks and they're gonna drive the bus. Uh, I, but I think it's very helpful to have your perspective, that hey, look, between sixteen and eighteen hundred, to me, there's no question. Needs to be one owner, don't impact everybody else, it doesn't wanna be impacted, have a straight shot down there. Even though, you know, there may be more money on that river for the bridge, but, okay. They can either afford it, the market need to pay for it, or they won't.
Well, I just. I'm glad you understand that, but I'm just, I'm, my opinion is that the landlords that this affects. Should have way more clout in a conversation than the developers wanting to cross here or sixteen hundred. Because these guys are gonna make their money off their development down here.
Yeah.
And it doesn't matter what happens up here. And I think we should have as much, if not more, clout at the table than what they're, than what they're bringing, I mean, I. And the reason I come to this is you hear, well, we're gonna, we're gonna go through, cross the river at Martinez, and we're gonna go through Heslops. Then we're gonna go through McFarland's, and we're gonna go through two Galys, you know what, now we're back on eighteen hundred. For me, I need, I need to kind of know. What you guys are thinking, where this is gonna go, because I got some things that I need to consider myself. Cause every time that. You know, the developers talking about me with you guys, the, the alignment changes. And they can change the alignment because they really got nothing to lose, they got ground out here, they wanna develop, but they got, they got nothing to lose. I mean, we've got a lot to lose up here. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna stay on twenty five fifty, let's stay on twenty five fifty, I'll agree, you know what, we probably need to leave. Eighteen hundred. If we're only gonna go down so far, we probably need to leave that on the map, because there's two major landlords there. That when we sell, there's a lot of development that's gonna happen, and little sixteen hundred, uh, well, they could come over to this new road.
Yeah.
Who owns that property, east, blue line is or purple or whatever, that magenta? No, we, okay, that was one, well, McFarland's closer. Go ahead, all the way up to the river.
McFarland's.
So McFarland's really, cause right now if the bridge goes through, whoever owns the west side, and I don't know who that is. But on the east side, McFarland, who I wish was here, would have to agree, cause that's going right through his property.
This is the.
That's, that's future legacy.
I, I mean, right, I understand that, I'm talking about, what I'm talking about is the bridge. The bridge placement, and, and, and maybe it goes clear up there, who owns that right there to the west of that?
This is, this is the Taylor Gibson family that owns that. Yeah, and like I said, I don't think they'd have an issue with that at all, I really don't. I can't imagine.
No, they probably like it.
And we, and we had met with all of us there, Kenny was hoping that he could get this legacy to kind of go more of a straight, maybe even take a little loop back here, give up this over here, but, but to keep all this here.
So move that farther west.
Just move it southwest. Just kind of make a loop, just like that.
He's put a lot of more improvements into this.
Yeah, more like this.
Just kind of a bigger swoop here.
Just to.
It's all what the environmental's gonna say anyway, we're all, we're all just talking, the environmental survey's gonna tell us all what.
No matter where they go out here, there's gonna be environmental issues.
No matter where they go out here, there's gonna be environmental issues to deal with, doesn't matter.
Well, uh what he's alluding to, the environmental document that's being alluded to is not so much. Focused a hundred percent on the wetlands issue, but it looks into a lot of other things, historical, uh threatened endangered species, tribal. Contacts, I mean, there's, it's it's a process, right, and 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 to that point, like you're saying, it will, it will. Yeah, drive that a little bit, they'll have to clear that corridor and it it's usually swaths that are probably. A mile wide through there.
I went through that process that you're describing right over here.
Yeah.
And there's nothing different over here than over here. Um at the, in general terms, they might, they may find another arrowhead down there than they found over here, but that's, you know.
Dirt's the same.
Exactly.
Well, the time for Kenny to have a conversation is probably. Get with UDOT right now.
Yeah.
Start talking about corridor preservation and tell them, I'm happy to give you a corridor, but here's where I want my corridor. That, because that's just a blue line right now.
And there's not up there, there's not as many of the woolly salt mosquito that you've.
Well, I don't know.
We gotta save those.
There's quite a few.
Yeah.
Well, Commissioner, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Runner, add a boy.
Appreciate you folks coming, this has been very important even. It's good to hear from the people who know what they're talking about.
I think, Mr. Chair, we are gonna, next time you come, though, we're gonna have to ask Mr. Heslop to settle down just a little bit. A little bit more.
So, so before we call this quits.
Yeah.
Seems I got all of you important people from the county here.
I think he's talking about Gary and Derek.
I I know we didn't have much of a flooding concern this year, to some people, to others of us, it was a wreck. But something I think that you guys really need to take a look at is coming right off the river. Right here somewhere. Just south of the tracks, more so over here, cause the ground's not as good, you build a permanent spill. At four thousand CFS on that river, then you deal big, dig a dirt channel straight to the lake. Stay on the north side of Ogden Bay. That way, in high water years, we don't have to worry about opening gates, closing gates, who's gonna get flooded? If we do this now, before they develop, it's already set in place. Just give you a channel, just like a grassy waterway they have back east, straight shot to the lake.
What about it, was that about eighteen hundred?
Yeah, it is, it is about eighteen hundred.
Well, and we discussed it the other night, this.
We we had it up a little bit higher, cause the, cause the river's really flat from the railroad tracks south. That river is really flat and you've got all this hoopla here and there's no way to relieve the pressure, you guys are. The the little weavers trying to relieve the pressure, you know, danger up to your paper, you come down here and just take a straight shot. In the water years, when the water's high, you know what, we get a historical rain event, the water's gone, nobody gets flooded.
So are you saying that's the spot or this is the spot?
Well, just.
Somewhere out here.
It's it's a permanent deal, I mean. It, nobody has to be called in the middle of the night to open the gate, nobody's gotta be called, you know, who's gonna take the blame for this? You know what, if 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 we do something like that now, before this ground gets developed, it's already there.
Four thousand, that's a lot. I mean, you you top, that's, that's pretty big, that's pretty wide, pretty deep. Once, once the river.
We was forty-seven fifty over four thousand. I thought he wanted it. Your Los Angeles canal thing.
So what's wrong with that? What what's wrong with that compared to what we got now? Because we opened a little weaver and we've got nothing but a friggin mess.
So you just, you you get, you maybe do.
Who approved that little weaver, by the way?
Yeah, who approved that little weaver, by the way, we can't use.
I think it was Andrew's cousin.
Was it?
Was it your cousin?
I'll take the blame.
While we're doing all this, while we're gonna cross the ridge and we're planning for future development out here. I I personally think something like that ought to be done, because this is all aground now along the river, but it's all gonna go to development. I mean, you guys have got now over on ways, you know what, they got set. So so much of a setback away from the river for flooding, don't matter if the river comes over the banks like it did this year. It it don't matter, the whole thing to fifty-nine hundred's underwater, there's no, there's no reason to make him stay back two hundred feet from the river, it's no good. If you do something like this down here to let the water go, they can build right up to the banks of the river.
Where's all that property going out there?
Litchfield Capital.
Yeah. And they're the group tied in with the uh. Uh, right. Utah inland port, inland port, thank you.
We gotta talk. I gotta look at that discussion, Gary, at some point, as we talked about the inland port and their developments.
It would help them.
Now, it would help them a lot. Well, I guarantee you, the inland port took a serious interest in that, they would want that.
Yeah.
Well, look at all the drainage they've had to do out there at the airport in Salt Lake, I mean, this is no different.
Yeah.
Um, the elevation's probably about the same, so, yeah.
So there's not a lot of chance we're gonna get the encyclopedia brick down if you come in here and tell us how that works and that. You have all this history in here.
Yeah.
That makes it pretty good for me.
I know they, I know.
I don't need this, with all due respect, Gary. That helps me as much as any engineering study that's here, you know what I'm saying, to believe that.
Gary, can we put that in for a couple million?
Oh, no.
You don't, you don't have, you don't get.
Get some great Salt Lake, save the money, save the lake money.
No, that's.
Because.
This would be a project to take, what they put in last year, two hundred and eighty million, I heard.
Yeah.
That can't be that much money to dig a thing all the way out there like that.
Well, the the good thing here versus our little weaver up there is we're not flowing back uphill and you've got a direct shot, we're not, you know.
And it's, it's pretty flat, it's not downhill, I mean.
Well, it relieves, what it'll do is relieve that mess we've got over there at Twelfth Street and the railroad tracks. That's, I mean, it backs up terrible right there.
Yeah.
Put a bridge in so they can still get dog in bay, so, and that other road.
Oh, my heavens, now we're talking another word. You're using this, I know, you do, you do have to put a a bridge there.
But that's okay.
But. A- and I would think that Mr. Hanson would be okay with that bridge. That that's managed in Ogden Bay.
Yeah.
Because that keeps a big, instead of having. Forty-seven or forty-eight. Hundred CFS come down there, he knows he's not gonna get more than forty-eight, which is more than they can handle anyway. That takes his big influx off of washing out dams and dikes and and everything else.
Well, all I know is this last year, I was sure grateful for whoever got under Mr. Hanson's backside and made him open those gates for a change.
And Nadolski.
Ben did a lot of that.
Ben.
Well, that was good.
That was, that saved our, a lot of our bacon.
Yeah, it did.
These guys did a lot of the work as well, but. Would have, could have been a lot worse.
Yep. For sure.
Hey, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you guys, you.
Yep.
Appreciate you.
Thanks a bunch.
Thanks for the education.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, we got something else.
Nice try, Harv.
You tried. This is supposedly this. John, this is, this next issue, no big deal.
Yeah, this Scott has the information essentially.
All right, thank you.
So we're gonna go on to our next agenda item, our final one, three thirty discussion regarding county owned parcel conveyed to Huntsville.
Oh, that's what this is.
And stormwater easement for Wonder Block.
Yes.
What are we doing with the stormwater?
So.
In Wonder Block?
Yeah, with the Wonder Block development. The developer is doing their research, getting their surveys prepared, and they found a stormwater easement. That was in favor of Ogden City and Weaver County, we were named on it.
Ah.
So Scott has been talking to the.
Hmm.
The guy representing the developer and they would like us to sign a release document. Which. Is probably okay, Ogden City has signed it as well. It's not on any property that we own or that we think we have an interest in, so Scott can show you what that looks like.
Okay.
And then he can talk about the Huntsville parcel.
Do we use it at all?
No, no, it's in the middle of Ogden City, it's right by the court, Second District Court Building.
That's what we're gonna determine, just to make sure.
So where is it? Because we have, we, you know, the old jail's ours.
Yes, it's it's not right there, it's it's a block further west of the old jail.
So we've asked the engineer's office to get with Ogden City. And double check and make sure that the county does not need it.
Yeah.
And so here is.
On that block, that other block down. Yeah, it's on the court, the block the court building is on.
This fills the court building.
That might help you.
So that's the courts there?
Yeah, to get that oriented, right, you can see where the court building is and then west of that.
Oh. Well, it looks like it, yeah, it goes right through the. South end of their park, of the porch parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, down to Lincoln.
Yeah, down to Lincoln.
We don't own those parking stalls, do we? Have any right to those parking stalls?
No.
Some brilliant attorneys, you can make that. Um, okay, so in nineteen seventy-five, the city and the county was granted this perpetual, a temporary construction easement and a perpetual easement for. Stormwater. Rites and stuff like that, so the Ogden Lodge seven one nine Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks.
Seven nineteen, I was a member of that.
The, was the grantor.
That was the old Elks building right there.
Yeah.
You knew that.
I remember that.
And she get that easement for him, is, are you the one that put that in?
I might have, yeah.
Fisher Boyd's story signed, showing the.
Okay.
That the county accepted it.
Okay.
So anyway, I think Sean described to you, Ogden City has come to us, actually the developer, um, this is part of Wonder Block. Uh, they don't feel that the county needs it, we've asked engineering to get with city engineering just to make certain that. The jail or the county's property in the, at the municipal block isn't utilizing anything through there.
Yeah.
If there's no need, what what we're just going to ask you is, if we're able to determine there is no need for the stormwater easement. Are you willing to consider a release? And then we would prepare those documents, bring it to you. Given that we've found that there is no need.
I think as long as we get their tip reduced from ninety percent to seventy, I'm all for it.
I knew you were gonna start negotiating.
Uh, yeah, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
I don't, unless, unless there's some benefit that we're using.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay, we will look into that.
Based on your positive fun, yeah, you know.
Yes, we'll have the engineers verify that and if that's the case, then. We'll bring it to you.
We could be a hard Eddie though, actually, if you wanted to be. Yeah.
There's your negotiating.
Yeah.
They'll review.
What pound of flesh can we get?
Yeah.
They'll review CJC plans for nothing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they've got documents we need seen, signed. Vice versa, let's, let's agree to meet at the center of the street and change, sign documents.
Perfect. I love it.
Otherwise, you know, I don't see us meeting again until April and May. On this.
Tell that person to Brandon Cooper, yeah. Well, no, we'll have Steph do it. Okay, go ahead.
Um, Sean, can you bring up?
Yes. All right, Commissioner, can you hand me that keyboard, please?
There you go.
Thank you, sorry, so much, sorry, yeah. So at the intersection of State Road thirty-nine and Third Street. You would, if you're going past Christmas around, yes, and if you were to take a left and head west into Huntsville.
Yep.
At that intersection on the north side.
Is that where the post office is, right there?
Next street over.
Yep, continue north.
That's on five hundred.
Yep, if you go to First Street or one hundred south.
Cemetery Road.
Yeah, that's good, yes. So at the intersection, on the Huntsville side, on the north side of First Street, of the the city's road there. Is a strip of land owned by the county, it's sixteen and a half feet wide.
Hmm.
I forget the length.
How do we ever end up with that?
Probably part of a road.
My stamp is right there.
Okay, so you can see the, Sean, can you zoom out just a little bit? The county's parcel, that thin strip, the one north of it, that larger squareish piece. And the parcels to the north and to the west, yes, and over there, yes. Um, are being annexed.
See, that's all okay. Okay, that's all being.
There's.
I, I heard reports of that happening.
Okay, there's an annexation plot in the county surveyor's office for review.
Okay.
They called us and as a courtesy said, hey, you know, the county's parcel's in here. Just so you're aware, so we said, great, we'll bring it to the commissioners. Um. The surveyor's office is asking if the county's fine with that going into the town, I don't see why the county wouldn't be careful with going into the town, but. The question I have for you today is, because we've been successful in conveying property to Marriott Slatorville, that's basically road parcels. And because we recently, you conveyed a property, a road parcel to North Ogden City. For zero dollars because of the situation that we've been able to work out as far as past road maintenance and care. The county hasn't had to accept fair market value, the county has considered. That value as being received already because of. Improvements in the care that the towns have already given it. So anyway, this is going into the town, my question for you is. Are you okay or you're comfortable with me approaching Huntsville and asking Huntsville if they would just accept that sixteen foot wide strip?
Well.
And they would own it.
Hold on here, so if we conveyed it to Huntsville. In my opinion, I I don't mind doing that, as long as that deed would restrict them or. Uh, expansion of road or, you know, increasing the width of that road, I don't have a problem with that. But the way, if they annex that in, and they could turn around and sell that to, tell it to the developer, the developer probably is gonna need that for access. Just looking at it, for his development.
That would make more sense than it would off of the larger highway.
I don't, I don't think UDOT will give them a access option, other than the one they have up right now where the home is.
That is county, as you go past north of the intersection, that's where.
Was that County Road?
It, it, that's where it begins.